Anthony, this is Don. Can you confirm that you can hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Thank you, Anthony.
Yep.
Good morning. Welcome to the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors meeting on Monday, November 1st, 2021. We are here present in the board chamber, so the fourth floor of the courthouse, and also present via Zoom, so welcome those in the virtual world. We begin our board meeting with an opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to make public comments, they may do so by approaching the podium. If you are on Zoom and you wish to address us, you would raise your hand in the reactions button on the bottom of your screen, or enter a comment in chat. Are we fairly sure that folks in the virtual world can hear us? We had trouble with this last week.
Anthony.
Okay, very good. We'll wait a moment to see if anyone wishes to address the board. Very good. Well, this morning, we have a proclamation before the Board of Supervisors, and I will read it into the record. Whereas Hospice of Dubuque County is the only local nonprofit hospice serving Dubuque County since 1983, and whereas Hospice of Dubuque's team of healthcare professionals and dedicated volunteers are your local neighbors who have provided this life-honoring care for over 38 years, and whereas Hospice provides a service that comes to you in your time of need, in the place you call home, in hometowns and rural areas throughout Dubuque County and the greater tri-state area, and whereas Hospice of Dubuque's care is individualized, focused on patient goals and support for family members, and this care brings hope, comfort, dignity, and quality of life. Now therefore, the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the month of November 2021 as National Hospice Month, and urge all citizens to recognize Hospice of Dubuque and the exceptional service they provide to our terminally ill and their loved ones. Proclamation adopted this first day of November 2021. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation. I will second.
If a motion is second to approve the proclamation, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, that motion carries. We are fortunate to have Levon Noel with us. If you want to go to the podium and perhaps give us your thoughts. I can express my gratitude on behalf of my family. You've done wonderful, beautiful things for us, so I was delighted to read this into the record.
Well, thank you very much. Yes, my name is Levon Noel, and I am Executive Director for Hospice of Dubuque, and it's an honor to be here, and it's so exciting that it's November 1st, and that is the start of National Hospice Month. First of all, I want to thank the Dubuque County Board of Supervisors for taking the time to include this proclamation in your meeting. This provides an opportunity to raise awareness regarding hospice care, so community members know where to turn in their time of need when they or a loved one are facing life-limiting illness. Hospice of Dubuque is the only local nonprofit hospice. Our professional staff and selfless volunteers have served Dubuque County in the greater tri-state area since 1983. No one likes to think about that last chapter of life, and yet it is something that each of us will eventually face. The goals of hospice care are quality of life, comfort, dignity, and hope. The community can take comfort in knowing that we at Hospice of Dubuque are here for you. We are your friends and neighbors, and we bring life-honoring care to you and your family wherever you call home. Hospice of Dubuque is your hometown hospice, and we are here for you, and please help us celebrate National Hospice Month and spread the word about the benefits of hospice care. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The auditor will give a test. Do you need a photo or anything? Do you do a Facebook present?
Come on up. Come on up.
Can we do that in the COVID era?
We can. We can and we have.
In the COVID era, don't we? We're matched.
Proclamation there.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Is that the photographer there?
I am.
Thank you.
He got me for a minute. I'm like, wow, is that smiling?
Next on our agenda are the approval of the minutes of October 5th, or excuse me, 25th, 2021.
I'd make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I will second that.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Under consent items, we have one, which is the wine permit for Barrelhead Winery on Lodville Road. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
I will second.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, that motion carries. On our agenda next, we do not have any procurement procedures. On the fifth item, there are no public hearings. Sixth, no plats today. Moving on to item number seven, which is the action items. The board may approve, deny, or table any action item. The first is a resolution to approve fiscal year '22 Tom Hancock Memorial Fire and EMS Grant Recommendations. We have Tom Berger present with us. Would you want to come to the podium and give us anything you wish to? Obviously, we have your proposed resolution, but is there anything you'd like us to know?
Okay. That's Tom Berger, Dubuque County Emergency Management Coordinator. On behalf of all the fire and EMS agencies, I'd like to thank you for your consideration. The committee met and were able to partially fund or fund the request from everybody that did submit a application for this year's grant. This will be the third year, so a total of $375,000 has been awarded to fire and EMS, and it provides very important equipment, fills the need for the volunteer fire and EMS agencies. And this year particularly, with the timing of it, some of the departments were able to match what they use this as part of their grant to fulfill a project through some other funding sources like the DRAs. So with everything, it's been extremely important this year, so thank you for your consideration. I'd answer any questions if you have them.
I have nothing.
No questions, just a comment to pass on our thanks to all the volunteers across all of the departments in Dubuque County.
Absolutely. And hopefully at the evening meeting, we can meet a little early and I'll work with Don and to have everybody here for the photo to those. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
I'd make a motion to approve the Tom Hancock Fire and EMS Grants.
I will second that.
A motion is second to approve that resolution. All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Next is a resolution seeking approval of the DARE first quarter reimbursement.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution for the DARE.
I will second.
Motion is second to approve resolution. All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Next is a simple duplicate warrant that's been lost in the amount of $58 to Sarah Cam.
I'll make the motion to approve the duplicate warrant for Sarah Cam.
And I will second that.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Next is a resolution seeking approval of the Electronic Services System 28E Agreement and Amendment. We have lengthy documents in our packet today. We also are pleased to have Dubuque County Recorder John Murphy here with us. John, is there anything that you would like to present to us for context or anything? Go to the podium, please. Thank you.
Again, John Murphy, Dubuque County Recorder. And this has been in discussion for probably 18 to 24 months as we have evolved what ESS or Iowa Land Records, what it's better known as. The responsibilities have changed and just the workloads increased, but it's been scrutinized by the Iowa County Recorder Association, the legislature, the governor's office, the Iowa Land Records Executive Board and Iowa Land Records staff. You know, the history, Iowa Land Records started in 2005, and what it is is a portal for lenders, lawyers, all to submit land records documents statewide. So you submit it through this portal, they send it out to the county, the county does what they're supposed to, and then it's all visible on the Iowa Land Records system. We are the only state in the Union that has 100% access to online submissions, and it's due to the Iowa Land Records portal that we utilize. And it's something that's always been important. We've had slow, steady growth for as long as it's been in existence, but 2020 happened to be a banner year for folks using online submission because they don't want to be going into courthouses and sending their staff in. So in the first quarter of 2020, 39% of all documents were e-recorded. Second quarter was 41%, third quarter 43%, fourth quarter 44%. So we, yeah, it's about a 10% increase just last year in the volume of records that were submitted online. So the other question I would have if I were your guys is, well, what does this amendment do to that existing 28E agreement? And essentially, the change allows for contracts to be managed through the 28E organization itself instead of our association, which is Iowa County Recorders Association. One thing that it has done that's in there, and it can be found in Section 4, Paragraph E on page four, is the previous version did not allow, include any language addressing vacancies on the committee. This suggestion came from ISAC Legal Counsel, Kristi Harshberger. So that was one of the pieces. Another piece is that it allows a little flexibility in how we utilize resources. So three, it costs $3 to e-submit an argument, and that's basically to help pay for staff that works for Iowa Land Records and to run that portal. The other substantive change involves the disposition of assets in the event, but hopefully unlikely that the ESS system is dissolved. The previous version provided that any remaining assets be distributed to the state. Now in this amendment, it's changed that those will be distributed equally amongst participating counties, which is all 99. And this was an internal suggestion that we had. And then the other piece to it is that the ESS system will remain under the direction of Iowa County Recorders Association. While the association may not legally be tied to ESS, all members of the ESS committee will continue to be appointed by the Executive Board of the Recorders Association. So that's kind of the background as to why we're doing the amendment in the first place. So if any of you have questions, happy to.
I have nothing.
None for me either. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone wish to make a motion approving the resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve the Electronic Services System 28E Agreement.
And I will second that.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, that motion carries. The next item, and the last item under action items, is the E.B. Lions 28E Agreement. Brian Preston is here from our Conservation Department. Do you want to come to the podium, Brian? We have a resolution allowing the chair to sign the 28E agreement. There's also a signature page for Brian on behalf of the Conservation Board, I believe.
Yep. So on October 21st, the Conservation Board met and unanimously approved the 28E agreement for the E.B. Lions, the Center 28E Agreement. So I think it's a really unique agreement that, between the parties, that really helps the public and will help all the parties involved. So I think it's beneficial for everybody and looking forward to it.
When will you have keys to open it up and to begin this?
So the 28E agreement would need to be officially recorded with the state of Iowa. Next week, we're planning on doing a walkthrough. Next week, we're planning on doing a walkthrough of the facility, and I would hope maybe by December 1st, be a reasonable date.
Are there any questions or comments for Brian?
No, I'm glad the project is finally moving forward.
Supervisor Wickham, is there anything?
Just the opportunity if the city, the friends, or the state would like to speak, if the chair would recognize them, I would be interested in hearing their comments and why this is important.
If you wish to speak, you may do so. It's hard to recognize folks with their mask on. Marie, good morning.
Good morning. Marie Ware, Leisure Services Manager for the City of Dubuque. Thank you supervisors for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. This is a true partnership with everyone bringing their best to the table. It started out with the conversations about the goals section, because if we all didn't have the same goals in mind and that it didn't meet all of our goals as partners, it really would have never developed into a partnership at all because different ones would have stepped away from the table. But each has stood and worked with that. Thank you to Brian Preston with the County Conservation. Thank you to the DNR and Dietrich Detman and the former Parks Division Leader, Jennifer Tigges and Rudy Perseco from the Friends of the Mines of Spain. Those are individuals that, along with many others, that have sat around the table for years to be able to come up with something that works for everyone. And so we're very excited about this. The Friends of the Mines of Spain did approve this agreement already. It is on the city council's meeting this evening, and then it would be on the Natural Resources Commission meeting on November 10th. And so we're kind of in the final stretch. So we thank everyone for their support, and we believe through this partnership that this is a one of a kind, that people will talk about, not only throughout the state, but throughout the nation, of how governments and Friends groups can come together and really bring your best to the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments and for being here and your leadership as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Jennifer Tigges from the Friends Group, if you'd allow her to speak, if she'd be interested.
Jennifer, are you with us virtually? Do you wish to make any comments?
Thank you. I think this is an amazing partnership. It has taken years to come together, and the huge benefit will be for the public and for the children. I go out to the EB Lions Center from time to time to drop something off, and people are at the door wanting to come in, and I have to say no, and it's very heartbreaking. So we look forward to supporting both Dubuque County Conservation, the city, and the state Iowa DNR through the Friends Group.
Wonderful. Thank you, Jennifer. Do you recognize any other names?
This is Detman as well. She would like to speak from the state.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Dietrich Detman, and I am the district supervisor for the Parks, Sports, and Preserves Bureau for Northeast Iowa. And like others have said, this is a great partnership of strengths where we all bring our best that we have to bring forth to the partnership. And it's always exciting to be in an arrangement where we can link and leverage what everyone has and what we can bring. I know from the state's perspective, we're excited to see that this will get the center back open again and, you know, under the operation of, with the cooperation of the county and with their skills and experience in programming. And then also that DNR will continue to have our focus on the exterior part of Mines of Spain and keeping the grounds and everything up for those facilities for visitors to the greater area. So I think it really is going to be a nice win-win. And though it's been a lengthy process, it's been, you know, very well thought out so we could have the very best agreement possible. And sometimes that patience, it really pays off. So we look very much forward to the next chapter and assuming this continues to move forward with approvals and finishing with the Natural Resources Commission, hopefully get those keys turned over very soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that you recognize, supervisor?
No, I think we hit them all. Thank you.
Very good. Well, it's wonderful that all of the partners are here. It's greatly appreciated as well. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
I would make a motion to approve the contract to EB Lions 28E.
I will second that.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Next, we have some communications, which is basically a manure management plan update indicating no changes. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve or receive and file.
I will second.
Motion is second to receive and file. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Under appointments, we have our remaining vacancies. We anticipate there will be some, several applications, we hope, perhaps this week to look at county, the supervisors, compensation board members. I think that's the open vacancy that is most concerning certainly to me at this time. And the next items on our agenda are personnel requisitions. The first one is permanent full-time Sunny Crest Food Service Director. Did you want to give us some background?
This is currently budgeted as a full-time position, and it is now vacant because of a recent resignation.
I would make the motion to approve the Food Service Director.
I will second that.
Motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. And then next, we have a conservation naturalist. Brian Preston has just left the room. Do you want to give us some context for that as well?
This position is a new position, so this will be his second naturalist position. It was approved during the budget process, and I believe it is going to be working at the EB Lions Center, spending a lot of time in that new facility that we're partnering with.
I believe this will bring us, well, I believe we have three budgeted, so maybe we don't have three active on staff right now. But three is the number we're searching for, and the agreement that we just approved basically points to a third conservation, excuse me, naturalist that would be at EB Lions. And so we've got a real good workload related to students and youth that come in that we do outreach for, and additional to adult programming as well. And there is, I believe, a memorandum of understanding that we signed with the Dubuque Community Schools to pay for a component of the naturalist piece. But that's not in front of the supervisors at this moment, but has gone through the Conservation Board.
I appreciate that update. Do you have any questions?
And one last comment is that, so this is at the discretion of the Conservation Board and the Board of Supervisors. So that was a key point that I insisted we take out of the 28E Agreement that required us to have the staffing level for 10 years. While I certainly encouraged and would hopefully want this for 10 years, I didn't want to lock in that position for a 10-year agreement. So it's still at the discretion of the Conservation Board and the Board of Supervisors. I will make a motion to approve the naturalist position.
I will second.
We have a motion is second to approve the naturalist position. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. At this time, public comments are also allowed. That completes our formal meeting. We do have other items, including a COVID update that will begin at 9:45 this morning. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board about any item that is of concern? We will pause a moment and allow folks to go to the podium. Or in the alternative, if you're with us on Zoom, you may enter a comment into chat, and we'll know that you wish to speak or raise your hand using the Zoom function under the reactions. We'll wait a moment. We have no one stepping forward in the boardroom. Is there anyone online indicating no? Very good. Looking for a motion to recess until 9:45.
So moved, and I will second that.
Motion is second to recess. All in favor?
Aye.
We are in recess until 9:45. Thank you, everyone.
My apologies, we'll come back into session for the Board of Supervisors and we'll have our COVID update from Patrice Lambert and any other public health staff that are with. Good morning, Patrice, thank you for being here.
Hey, just a couple of things to share, you probably all got our Friday update with all of our information on our testing and our numbers. Just to let you know again, that 70.3 of all of our eligible people in Dubuque County that are eligible for a booster have received one or else they have started one. So that's 12 and older, so that's 70.3%, so we're still climbing. And 95% of our 65 years of age and older have either completed or started their vaccine in Dubuque County. So we're very excited about that because those numbers continue to climb. Unfortunately, Dubuque County as well as the state of Iowa and again, the majority of the US continue to be in that high transmission rate. So we do still encourage people to follow the COVID, or I'm sorry, to follow the CDC COVID-19 recommendations. That include all of the social mitigations from staying at home if you're ill, wearing a mask, social distancing, all of the strategies that can help reduce the transmission of the COVID itself. And then we just thought we would go through the PowerPoint that Dawn has up for us. And we just thought, we know that there's been a lot of talk about testing. So we just thought we would show you some data. And for Dubuque County in the month of October, this past month that we just finished, we basically averaged 250 tests a day. We had 6,000, a little over 6,000 individuals that had tested using the PCR test. And our positivity rate was the 18.6. Forty-nine of those individuals tested negative and about 1,100 of those individuals tested positive. Then we looked at how many people tested with using an antigen test or a rapid test. 1,600 individuals were tested using that procedure. 1,559 of those individuals tested negative. Eighty-six of those individuals tested positive. So the positivity percent was 5.2%. We do know, a lot of people are questioning about the over-the-counter COVID tests. We really, if we encourage people, if you have another option, please go with that other option. Because those over-the-counter COVID tests are not reported to the IDPH. So we're not aware if someone is utilizing, if they go into a drugstore or a pharmacy and if they do purchase one of these tests, they may find that they're positive sitting at home but not tell anyone. And we would not know about it because those results are not submitted to IDPH. So we always inform people, if you can do a PCR or a rapid test or to take one of those at-home tests to report or to do that because that is reported to IDPH, we always encourage people to go that route versus one of the over-counter. We also have been meeting on a weekly basis with our local testing providers. And they are all reporting to us that they do have an adequate supply of testing materials at this time. We do know that there was a shortage with that, but they have all presented to us that they're catching up with all of their supplies. The next slide, Dawn? We just thought we would briefly explain the types of tests. The diagnostic tests, as you're aware, are the molecular, the PCR, and the antigen tests, which are those rapid tests. Those are typically done using a nasal or a throat swab or spitting, using your saliva and spitting into a tube. The antibody tests are not as popular. And those antibody tests are usually done with a finger stick or a blood draw. And really with the antibody tests, they're just looking to see, has your body responded to the COVID infection in the past? And that response is currently still in your system. Slide Dawn? We also wanted to share the difference between the molecular, which again, is basically the PCR, and the antigen test, which is the rapid testing. With the molecular test, the pros are, they're much more accurate than any test. It's a very high sensitivity test. And usually they are accepted for travel and to return to work. The cons are that they can take multiple hours or days to receive the test or the test results. And an example of that would be our take-home test that we have. Because a person will take the kit home, complete the test, send it to the hygienic lab, whether they do a drop-off at one of our courier pickups or else put a UPF label on it and send it down to the hygienic lab. But again, that test could be coming back within 24 to 48 hours. Whereas with the antigen test, the rapid test, the pros are, it's less expensive and you get the results almost immediately. These, with the rapid test, the antigen test, the cons are, they're potentially less accurate. They're very low in their sensitivity to that test itself. And they are typically not accepted for travel nor for a return-to-work confirmation that they did indeed take a test. Slide? And then again, just looking at finding the right test that is for you. With the at-home test kits, we have been giving out numerous test kits. We've really not had any negative complaints from people with those at-home test kits. Again, they're a PCR test, it's very easy to do, they spit into a tube, it's all saliva-based, completely free. People can do it at their kitchen table or counter or whatever the case may be. The results can be anywhere from 24 to 72 hours of a return result. And they are accepted for travel and return to work. The standard PCR test, again, it's a nasal swab, free, takes two to four days to receive the results. And again, they're accepted for travel or return to work. The rapid testing, they are costly, $75 to $150. But they usually take about an hour to receive the result. But they are not accepted for a travel or a return to work. And again, if a person were to go in to see their healthcare provider because of symptoms that they are displaying, that healthcare provider will talk with the individual about what test they feel that person should be taking to be tested for COVID.
Patrice, can I ask you a question?
My apologies. We'll come back into session for the Board of Supervisors and we'll have our COVID update from Patrice Lambert and any other public health staff that are with. Good morning, Patrice. Thank you for being here.
Hey, just a couple of things to share. You probably all got our Friday update with all of our information on our testing and our numbers. Just to let you know again, that 70.3 of all of our eligible people in Dubuque County that are eligible for a booster have received one or else they have started one. So that's 12 and older. So that's 70.3 percent. So we're still climbing. And 95% of our 65 years of age and older have either completed or started their vaccine in Dubuque County. So we're very excited about that because those numbers continue to climb. Unfortunately, Dubuque County as well as the state of Iowa and again, the majority of the U.S. continue to be in that high transmission rate. So we do still encourage people to follow the COVID, or I'm sorry, to follow the CDC COVID-19 recommendations that include all of the social mitigations from staying at home if you're ill, wearing a mask, social distancing, all of the strategies that can help reduce the transmission of the COVID itself. And then we just thought we would go through the PowerPoint that Dawn has up for us. And we just thought, we know that there's been a lot of talk about testing. So we just thought we would show you some data. And for Dubuque County in the month of October, this past month that we just finished, we basically averaged 250 tests a day. We had 6,000, a little over 6,000 individuals that had tested using the PCR test. And our positivity rate was the 18.6. Forty-nine of those individuals tested negative and about 1,100 of those individuals tested positive. Then we looked at how many people tested with using an antigen test or a rapid test. 1,600 individuals were tested using that procedure. 1,559 of those individuals tested negative. Eighty-six of those individuals tested positive. So the positivity percent was 5.2 percent. We do know, a lot of people are questioning about the over-the-counter COVID tests. We really, if, we encourage people, if you have another option, please go with that other option because those over-the-counter COVID tests are not reported to the IDPH. So we're not aware if someone is utilizing, if they go into a drugstore or a pharmacy and if they do purchase one of these tests, they may find that they're positive sitting at home but not tell anyone. And we would not know about it because those results are not submitted to IDPH. So we always inform people, if you can do a PCR or a rapid test or to take one of those at-home tests to report or to do that because that is reported to IDPH, we always encourage people to go that route versus one of the over-counter. We also have been meeting on a weekly basis with our local testing providers and they are all reporting to us that they do have an adequate supply of testing materials at this time. We do know that there was a shortage with that, but they have all presented to us that they're catching up with all of their supplies. The next slide, Dawn? We just thought we would briefly explain the types of tests. The diagnostic tests, as you're aware, are the molecular, the PCR, and the antigen tests, which are those rapid tests. Those are typically done using a nasal or a throat swab or spitting, using your saliva and spitting into a tube. The antibody tests are not as popular and those antibody tests are usually done with a finger stick or a blood draw. And really with the antibody tests, they're just looking to see, has your body responded to the COVID infection in the past and that response is currently still in your system? Slide Dawn? We also wanted to share the difference between the molecular, which again, is basically the PCR, and the antigen test, which is the rapid testing. With the molecular tests, the pros are they're much more accurate than any test. It's very, it's a very high sensitivity test and usually they are accepted for travel and to return to work. The cons are that they can take multiple hours or days to receive the tests or the test results. And an example of that would be our take-home test that we have because a person will take the kit home, complete the test, send it to the hygienic lab, whether they do a drop-off at one of our courier pickups or else put a UPF label on it and send it down to the hygienic lab. But again, that test could be coming back within 24 to 48 hours. Whereas with the antigen test, the rapid test, the pros are it's less expensive and you get the results almost immediately. These, with the rapid test, the antigen test, the cons are they're potentially less accurate. They're very low in their sensitivity to that test itself. And they are typically not accepted for travel nor for a return-to-work confirmation that they did indeed take a test. Right? Dawn? And then again, just looking at finding the right test that is for you. With the at-home test kits, we have been giving out numerous test kits. We've really not had any negative complaints from people with those at-home test kits. Again, they're a PCR test. It's very easy to do. They spit into a tube. It's all saliva-based, completely free. People can do it at their kitchen table or counter or whatever the case may be. The results can be anywhere from 24 to 72 hours of a return result and they are accepted for travel and return to work. The standard PCR test, again, it's a nasal swab, free, takes two to four days to receive the results. And again, they're accepted for travel or return to work. The rapid testing, they are costly, $75 to $150, but they usually take about an hour to receive the results, but they are not accepted for a travel or a return to work. And again, if a person were to go in to see their healthcare provider because of symptoms that they are displaying, that healthcare provider will talk with the individual about what test they feel that person should be taking to be tested for COVID.
Patrice, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What testing, which of these is being done in the schools right now?
Um.
Or let's talk about elementary kids, high school kids, higher education?
Sure. With our schools in Dubuque County, they are using the at-home test kits. We are supplying them with those tests to, none of the tests are being done in the school itself.
There's no testing on the school's campus in any of those things I described or just elementary?
No, no tests pre-K through 12.
Okay.
Now, college, higher ed is different because they are adults, they're able to sign off on their own, they don't need a parental consent. But for the pre-K through 12, there's no testing being done in the school settings that we're aware of.
So I had a school official ask me for help with school testing, that they would like rapid testing machines. Has that request been made to you?
No, it has not. We have talked about it and even as late as last Wednesday when we did meet with our pre-K through 12, we did say, would you have an interest if we could purchase the rapid testing for the school nurses to be able to give this test? At that time, they still said that they feel as though they're doing okay with the testing.
So.
Now, we know that can change in a heartbeat.
Well, when you say they said, is that the person who's at your weekly meeting or is that the school superintendent?
It's, one was the school superintendent, I'll be honest in saying that. The other one was the school nurse coordinator.
The school has a disconnect between who wants rapid testing in the schools and who's offering it and who's providing it and who's declining it. So.
Well.
But they're saying to me, well, we're not doing enough.
And I know that in the meetings that we have, we have offered the testing to them. So they are aware of, if they do want to get to that point, to contact us, to let us know and we will do whatever we can do to provide them with that test. We have been also helping them with the at-home tests. If their supplies are getting low, then we will take a supply to them or else they'll pick them up at one of our locations. So right now, they are not asking for the rapid testing to the incident management team.
Okay. So then let's talk about higher education. What kind of testing do they have on their campuses?
There's a variety. Again, the majority are the at-home, but is it Samantha's at UD that has the rapid testing? And Laura's? I think UD might be the only rapid.
Clark University has rapid testing as well.
Okay. And we can find that out because we do meet with our higher ed on a regular basis as well. We can find out what they use. But again, we have offered to them, if we can do anything to help with the testing, please let us know.
I think the question coming to us as supervisors is, what are we doing for testing? Are we doing anything to help get more testing available in the community? I mean, I've heard that from a few folks. And of course, my question is always back to Patrice, you know, what are we doing for testing?
And if someone were to contact you, if they did have a request, please tell them to contact us because then we'll be able to do whatever their need is, you know, whether they want to sign up to receive those at-home tests right at their school location, which the majority of them have already done that. But if there's anything that we can do, just please, you know, have them connect with us.
But they're asking me as an official engaged in pandemic prevention and recovery, what do I know? And I have to say, well, you know, I'll call Patrice and let her know that you have questions.
Sure. And we'll be glad to follow up with them.
Right. Do we have updated testing status on our website? Anything?
Yes, we do. We do. We have all of the locations of where you can go to pick up an at-home test as well as drop-off, as well as what pharmacies will do the PCR testing and the rapid testing. Yeah, we do.
So you think we're doing all that we can to put that out?
Well, if you look at 250 tests a day on an average for the month of October, I think we do have the opportunity for people to seek out a test. Yeah. And we do always know too, that there's some people that don't want to be tested because if they're positive, then that means they have to stay at home or if they're, you know, siblings or their family members are positive, they may have to leave work to stay home. But again, we're always trying to tell people, you should be testing, not only to protect yourself and your family, but to protect others as well.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. The next sheet, and Ann, our supervisor McDonough, this pretty much then would address our testing options and we do have.
That's the information I'd like to have on our website.
And we do.
Oh, right, right there. First thing that loads.
We can talk. And we do update it regularly. And then just lastly, of what I would like to share is that you're probably all aware that the FDA did approve the Pfizer on Friday for our five to 11-year-olds for vaccines. We are awaiting for the ASAP to do their final approval as early as tomorrow. And if they do approve that, then we will still have to wait for the CDC director to approve it. And then if the CDC director approves the Pfizer five to 11-years of age, they contact our Iowa Department of Public Health. And then in return, Iowa Department of Public Health will contact the Health Department with all of the guidance as well as the green light to begin those vaccinations. Any questions?
One of your, one of your first slides, you, you were showing percentages of positivity rates. Can you go back to that and why are, why are they so different? The two different tests, that's a pretty significant positivity rate change. Can you explain that?
Sure. We do know that the antigen tests are not as sensitive as the PCR tests. We don't know if, again, with those rapid testing, if people are going in because it's, you know, they need to have the results right away and they do have that rapid test, but they're, they went in too quickly before the guidelines with the CDC. The CDC does state that if you're in close contact with someone who has a positive case of COVID, you should actually test five to seven days after that exposure. So there could be a variety of reasons, but those were the ones that are just, I'm thinking of right at this minute.
Okay, thank you. Follow-up to that, I think on some of the other data you provided us, a very higher, the highest percentage of an age group is high school age or basically under 18.
Correct.
That continues to trend, at least from what I've seen over the last week or two, to be the highest group. What are we doing to mitigate that and/or to understand what the infection rate is?
The incident management team continues to share when we are in that high transmission level, that you should be following the CDC guidelines, wearing masks as well, as well as social distancing. We cannot force, as you're quite aware, we can't force, we can't do a mandate for the masks, we can't do a mandate for basically anything with our, with the CDC recommendations that the Board of Health is also recommending. So what we can do is just again, relay that information to the schools because you're right, it's that zero to 17 years of age, that is the highest level with the positivity rate. We do know that with our school districts, they have set their internal guidelines and they are following through with those internal guidelines. Sageville just had an increase of positivity rate. They did instill the mask mandate. Out at Western Dubuque, they had a school that was high. They too instated their guidelines of what they have in place. So all we can do is continue to share the information and also encourage people, if you're sick, stay at home. If you're not feeling well, get tested.
Thank you.
So we're, we're trying, we truly are, but we can't, as you're quite aware, we can't mandate anything, so we just can only give the guidance.
Any questions, Supervisor Paz?
I don't know, ma'am.
Anything further?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Patrice.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the work sessions discussing the Fund 10 Balance projects that we have at this time. Are both presenters for Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging Present? I saw Mike come in and is there another staff person with you? Very good. If you'd like to come to the podium and address, and give your name and address for the record, whoever is presenting first?
Good morning. I am Lisa Wepple with the Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging. And are you, would you like my home address or our office address here?
The business address is five.
She'll find that. Mike Donahue, I'm the CEO for Northeast Iowa Area Agency on Aging. I'm eye candy today because Lisa has done a lot of this work, working with Ed to present this, but I wanted to make sure that Lisa had the right support, so.
Good to see you. There was rumors that you had left our community, but it's good to see you here.
Yeah, I haven't built the borders yet. I can still get the air from the corners, so thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Mike. And do we have a presentation as well? Lisa, did you want to go ahead and step us through your request? This is of course concerning brain health, so direct services or related services. So the funding is to that end?
Correct.
Or removing community barriers related to brain health?
If I could interject, just a question. So there was no timeframe in the presentations and I know the last time we did this, we ran into some time crunches. Does the chair have an idea of how long you'd like each presentation to go or do we want to keep this free-flowing and we stay as long as we have to? Like just the last time we did this, we had some time crunches and.
Last time we did this, I thought it ran actually fairly well. It was the time before that, right?
Maybe two times ago, maybe two times ago, okay.
So it took a way that.
So I'm interested in how you'd like to proceed so that the presenters know, whether they should be spending five minutes or 50 minutes?
I, I think that they want to give a brief summary, be adequate, there'll be some questions and then that should suffice. Does that help?
For any unused time, Mike, because I know he.
Well, I mean, Mercy's going to ask for a million dollars. I'm expecting them to take a length of time to, you know, present a million-dollar request.
Well, I'll be brief and then I'm absolutely open to questions at the end so that we get lots of time. So I just did want to give you a quick overview of our updated mission and vision. The mission being NEI 3A helps older persons respond to their evolving needs and choice. This mission statement really points out that they are evolving needs. As many of you have heard, the growth of the senior population is at an all-time high and those needs are changing. Today's seniors are not what you would have considered to be in that same status seniors even a decade ago. So we want to be sure we're responsive to their needs and not focusing on needs of what was traditionally considered a decade plus in the past. And our vision is that older persons have access to supports that empower them to live with choice and dignity in their communities. We've really found and studies have found that older persons thrive if they are able to live in their community and home of choice. And if we can provide access to services to help them do so in a safe manner, that's really what we like to support so long as it's in line with the desire of the individual that we're serving. Next slide, please. So frequently I get questioned on what an area agency on aging is. And it is a part of a national network that provides information, personalized options that help individuals or their loved ones safely age at home. I've got a listing of our funding sources there for you. It is important again to notice that area agencies on aging are present in every state throughout the U.S. as required by the Federal Older Americans Act. And again, that really, the simplified purpose is to help individuals age safely where they choose to, typically being at home. Local county funding, such as we're requesting today, is used as a requirement for our match funding through the federal fund. Next slide, please. So what do we offer to support brain health? And this is also in addition to physical health as well, but primarily for brain health, we like to help individuals stay engaged with the activities they're familiar with. So there are studies that show that staying engaged in the community, staying engaged with their daily activities helps to keep that brain healthy. Some of those types of things would be things that you and I don't, you know, really always think a lot of as brain health, but they're very simple. So things like being able to access information and get options counseling so that they have an idea of what those options are that they have. We provide an assessment in-home if it is a safe time to do so. We have adapted during the COVID-19 pandemic to where we are providing more over-the-phone services or even telehealth-style services using different applications such as Zoom. And during that assessment, we determine their needs for community-based services, nutrition and caregiver support in addition to other services not as directly linked to today's presentation of brain health. The staff then can help them. I'm going to have you go back. That's okay. The staff that can help them to set up the services that are recommended and depending on funding sources, they can also potentially fund those services through our funding streams available. And then if services are funded or if requested, we will offer ongoing case management to ensure that the services that are being provided are still appropriate. Therefore, if we have someone who we get services in the home and a year later and we do situation changes, we can be sure to stay on top of that to keep them safe. Slide please. So just a little overview of what we are currently and doing in Dubuque County and where we were last year. In last year, fiscal year '21, we served 1,128 older individuals, so that would be persons over the age of 60, living in Dubuque County. Was a total of about $565,000 in services. So far for this quarter, you can see we're at 442 individuals and about $132,000 in services. We're on track to definitely meet or surpass last year's services. We have seen an increase in need during the COVID pandemic. We were charged with reaching out, especially to more rural areas and communities and making sure needs were met for meal services to help individuals get home to their meals so they could stay home and reduce exposure in public. And through that, we discovered there were a lot of additional services that either the consumer wasn't aware that was available or that we just had not had a touch with that person to let them know. And Dubuque County, all right, let me back up here. We roughly had about an average of $300 in services per month per person. Now, that's a very rough estimate because we do have individuals who receive daily meals that are going to have a higher service dollar rate if they're also getting in-home services. And we have some individuals that may be needing a much less number of services such as snow removal or lawn care that would put them in a less service tier. So it's a very broad range, but that's our, our closest average. And then I think it's important to note that Dubuque County is approximately 25% of our total cost for services out of our 18-county service area. So we do have a large presence in Dubuque County.
Are we your largest?
You are second largest.
To whom?
To Black Hawk County.
Okay.
And a lot of that is driven by nutrition. I mean, nutrition services in Black Hawk County are pretty significant.
And is nutrition services, do that mean Meals on Wheel?
It's not, yeah, I mean, it's home-delivered meals. It could be congregant meals, it could be virtual meal, you know, those types of things. Meals on Wheels is a national affiliation that we often get confused with, but it's, yeah, it's a part of it, but it's not everything.
Okay, so home and community-based services are services that are needed to maintain brain health and remain safe in the home. So as I mentioned earlier, those daily routine types of things, whether it be your cup of coffee first thing in the morning, making sure that your bed is made, laundry done on Wednesdays, whatever your normal typical routine is vital to brain health. And as folks start to age, they may not be able to do those things as independently and that can really be depressing and anxiety-causing for them. So we are discussing things that are funded such as. So we are discussing things that are funded, such as homemaking services, which includes cleaning, laundry, even preparing meals in the home if they are not eligible for our home-delivered meal services. The larger types of chore services outside, lawn mowing, snow removal, bathing and dressing assistance, which again, very important to brain health. If you aren't able to get up and put on those fresh clothes for the day, get your hair combed, take a bath, that can definitely cause some real feelings of disconnect and out of that normal routine. Assisted transportation, simply what it sounds like. We help them get to and from the places they need to go if they are unable to drive themselves any longer. We also have a new service that we've been rolling out the last year and a half, again, really driven by the pandemic, which is the Grand Pad. And this is essentially a very simplified tablet or iPad aimed at individuals 60 and over that is set up with just the basics of what they need. Very large print, very simple buttons, so there's not a lot of steps that you sometimes have to go through with technology today. We can program it in to be as simple or as complex as the individual wants. It can be a button that just says, "Call my daughter, call my doctor." They're able to do video conferencing with that as well so that they can see the kids and the grandkids, and they can also see their caseworker for a more in-person feel to those non-home home visits. These particular services, first quarter in Dubuque County, we have 187 individuals, 1,352 units of service for a total of about $53,000. Units of service we typically translate to about an hour of service. Next slide, please. Our nutrition program, which Mike explained, is more than just that Meals on Wheels. Meals on Wheels, you can essentially think of as a brand name. However, I do think it's important to note that they do not actually fund the services for the home-delivered meals. Those are funded federally, state, and locally. And it is more than just the home-delivered meals. Hopefully, our congregate sites will be up and running as soon as safely able to do so.
They are not right now in Dubuque County, is that correct?
They are not.
They are not. We have, we have looked at each individual site and spoken to the consumers that used to go there to get their feeling about that, if they feel safe to return.
There's multiple, yeah, there's multiple factors. It's not only the consumers that they want to come back, feels comfortable in coming back, but it's also a matter of volunteers.
Understand, but when I asked you about the meals, you said it was congregate settings? And is that happening? Are there congregate settings, yes or no?
Not presently, no.
Okay. So it is the delivery by transportation of meals?
Yes.
And then how many times a day would a person get that? Once a day, once a week?
The meal itself is intended for once a day. We have been doing, based on, again, volunteer shortness, I will say, and during pandemic to reduce that in contact with each individual person, we were doing a seven-day frozen meal drop-off.
So one contact, seven meals?
That's how.
In some cases.
In some cases, yes.
Some cases, it might be two, three times a week where it's one meal. And as she's going to talk about, the Iowa Cafe is a, is really a program that's been developed in the midst of the pandemic where we are, whereas before I mentioned, we either really have the seniors that may not be comfortable in going to a congregant meal site or want to. You know, Lisa started out talking about how it's evolving. Part of it's evolving, we kind of separate them, younger, older, older, older. Older, older loves congregant meal sites, where I can go eat, play cards. Younger, older, nope. They want something more interactive, they want something fresher. So that's what's led to the Iowa Cafe program, which is where we are contracting with small restaurants and throughout our 18 counties to reach out to them. And again, they have to meet the nutrition guidelines, but actually working with them to develop a menu that can be a part of their regular menu, where our folks can come in with a card, just have it read, it's a QR code, have it read, it logs and rosters them. Automatically, we pay the restaurant, but they like that because, you know, our congregant meal sites, $45, you sit down, you eat.
And so how many?
I may be working, and my, the best meal for me might be breakfast or it might be dinner, so now I can go to that Iowa Cafe site, get my nutrition for that day because it's simply more convenient. So we're seeing, that's an evolving shift amongst our consumers, as some are opting for both, some, they're still very much want the congregant meal site, so we find that balance.
And so how many Iowa Cafe sites or restaurants participate in Dubuque County touching how many people?
I don't have the number.
We have one, yeah, we don't have any restaurants, Iowa Cafe sites in Dubuque County at present. We started out the year four, we're up to eight, and we've got, I think there's some conversations going on in western Dubuque County right now. But again, we've got to find restaurants that want to partake in that, they want to, you know, they want to live by the nutrition guidelines that we have. So that's something that obviously takes time, but we've just started, frankly, started that across the 18 counties we serve.
I like the concept.
Concept's very popular. We have, in northeast, far northeast Iowa, we have, when we did this, we kind of started it basically as a means of reaching out to some sites where we couldn't get to, we couldn't get meals to. And they agreed to not only produce the meals but deliver them, which was, that's a bonus for us. And we talked to, at least three of those four came back to us as the pandemic started to kind of evolve and say they would not be open today if it were not for our contracted services with them. So yes, it's a, it's very much a win-win for the restaurants and small business, but also very much a win for the consumer if they're running something other than a congregant meal.
Please proceed.
All right. So those meals, whether they be home-delivered or in the future the congregant meal sites or Iowa Cafe sites, are all vital to physical and brain health. I don't have to give a lesson on nutrition. Everyone knows the importance of fruits, vegetables, proteins, and carbohydrates in the right amounts. And sometimes older persons who are homebound to those home-delivered meals may have difficulty in getting those items. So our meals are balanced to one-third of the daily recommended allowance for folks in that age 60-plus category so that we know they have one balanced meal per day. This balanced nutrition can prevent, or delay, or even improve cognitive decline just by having that healthy, balanced meal once a day. And then if it is not in that congregant meal site or Iowa Cafe site where they would have that interaction with their peers, we have several individuals who that home-delivered meal delivery is the only contact they may have with another individual. So they really look forward to the volunteers coming to drop off those meals. A lot of times, that's considered a very close friend to them, and they will have a small social interaction. Again, a little limited down with social distancing right now because of the risk and the seniors being at a higher risk. Meals in Dubuque County for the first quarter, we currently have 246 people receiving home-delivered meals for 9,500 meals this quarter at about $75,000. And then our third program that I want to talk about today that, again, is so impactful on brain health is our Family Caregiver Support Program. So this program is directly intended to provide support to those caring for an aging loved one. So it could be a fund, as it was the case with Mike caring for some loved ones recently. I am a caregiver for my 92-year-old grandmother, and these services would be for individuals like us who are also working, who have children, who have additional families. Caregiving has been shown to lead to declines in brain health. It is a very stressful, very high anxiety, very time-giving, stress-increasing form of love that we give. However, it is important. So we offer support groups to those individuals. Originally, they were all in person, however, again, the pandemic has really made us up our game, and we are offering virtual support groups now as well so people can come safely. A lot of our consumers have found that they really enjoy that because they don't have to find someone to watch for the individual that they are caregiving if that's necessary. They can step away into another room and do that virtually. Those support groups offer socialization, human connection for the caregivers, and a good place to be around others who are in that same situation. We also offer respite services, which are to give the caregiver a break. Not only does it give that caregiver a break, but I know some individuals, again, like my 92-year-old grandmother, absolutely do not want me coming to rake her lawn or to do her laundry because she feels it's more anxiety-producing for her, knowing I'm taking away from my family time. But they are more receptive if someone else can come and do that to give me a little break from that duty. There's also situations where they may not be comfortable with having their child or their grandchild do personal cares with them. So it really helps to benefit not only the caregiver but provides that need that the care recipient has as well. We are currently funding 38 caregivers for a total of about 672 units against translates into hours for about $14,000.
I'm just going to check in here. We're at 20 minutes of presentation. Are you close to summarizing?
Yep. Okay, so as we get on exactly to that, we talked, COVID has had some impact on us, it's identified more individuals. It made it that we need to expand services to meet new care needs. And at the beginning, we got lots of funding for that, but the care's funding has ended and the pandemic-related services have not. And this has provided us with a funding gap for services. So our original request was listed for $17,770. This is our standard number we do annually based on the number of individuals over the age of 60 living in each county, which I believe, I see a slight smile there, I think you somewhat remembers that from my last presentation. It was a good way to remember the number in the community. However, with the care's funding going away, the additional services, and now cuts that we are also receiving from the federal level, I would really like to present a higher request if funding is available. We would be able to easily expand up to $50,000 in services by the end of year fiscal year '22. That is showing, very representative of the need that we have, and I think it was shown earlier in just our slides based on each of those programs, that we are investing that amount.
I think the other point I would make that you may or may not know is that approximately, almost 47% of the folks that are 60 and older are living in a rural setting. And of those 30%, are living alone. Those two factors alone really do add to the cost of providing services, probably many others can attest to. And given the focus on rural Iowa, we're finding that clearly in our 18 counties because we probably have three or four communities that you would consider maybe non-rural, although I think all Iowa is rural. But we are finding a significant number of consumers, as Lisa pointed out, that are, may have only been a nutrition consumer for us for a long time, and now we're starting to do assessments and starting to find there are more and more needs. So I think that certainly is also justification for thinking of this in a different way than just head count. We're really seeing the need increase and therefore the funding request.
Thank you. We have a few minutes for questions, too. Supervisors have questions?
Question's you. Do you see this as a Fund 10 request that would go to that board?
Lynn County did submit after great discussion the request for the meal portion, but Lynn County has congregant meal sources as well. So I don't know. I mean, we can talk about that, but right now, we do need to move on. We have another funding request that has to be completed within 30 minutes, so.
We asked for questions.
Correct. So questions are.
Supervisor dialogue, opening, and you're the representative, you know, from what, I'm very supportive of your presentation and your program, we've supported the 17,000. I would be supportive of the additional 50,000 in Dubuque County for either Fund 10 regional funds or American Rescue Funds. And that's why you're here in the first group, because we were looking at Fund 10 requests, which this is a new one, which I'm glad you're here. So I'm just trying to understand the level of support from my colleagues in either of those two buckets, well, all three of the buckets, the 17,000 originally, and then the 50,000 related to either a Fund 10 or American Rescue Funds.
Well, I would think it definitely qualifies for the brain health funds. The assistance to caregivers is huge. I mean, I understand that because I went through it with my parents, and my mother was having a lot of issues. I mean, I understand that, and it is huge. I would be very supportive of the 50,000 also, wherever we could get it, if it's from the Fund 10 or from the ARP, but.
Are there questions for the folks who are before us?
No, but my question still stands, whether as the representative from the region, do you feel, as Supervisor Potoff and I feel, that we should present this to the region for Fund 10 balances?
I think.
That's why they're here. That's why they're first.
I understand that. I understand that. And those discussions will all be made on November 15th, after we've heard from all of the organizations. We're still getting applications for Fund 10 Balance Projects.
Appreciate that answer, but I think you heard from majority of the board, Supervisor Potoff and myself, that we would like this to go to the region as a request.
I understand that. Very good. Thank you so much for being here. The next application is going to be from Mercy One. So those individuals will should come forward, and I think if we have anyone here from Mercy One, Melissa, do you have anyone joining you virtually who needs to be unmuted?
David Moore or Sue Hackemeyer, I believe I see them on.
And John, do you have a presentation that you're going to screen?
I don't know that they would have comments.
Very good. Of course. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello. Really nice to be with you this morning, and hairperson McDonough, Supervisor Wickham, and it's good to meet Supervisor Potoff for the first time.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Melissa Springer. I am our Regional Vice President of Mission Integration for Mercy One's Eastern Iowa Region. And with me today is Michelle Arndt, I'm a community education nurse, kind of heading up our mobile unit plan. So, and thank you for the early presenting time. We have obligations in Des Moines later today, so appreciate that. If you'll look to the screen, we have probably too many slides today, but we'll move through them quickly, save some time for question at the end, and go from there. It's really no coincidence that before you, you have many solid plans related to brain health. Our community has significant need at this point. We had need prior to pandemic, and that need has only been enhanced. So much of what you'll hear from us today does involve some strategic initiative around meeting the needs of our county in terms of brain health. Start out, this is our Mercy One Mobile Medical Unit. This is a 31-foot customized Winnebago, and although there were many pandemic delays, we believe that it has arrived just at the perfect time for what we need to accomplish. The unit is customized with two full exam rooms, a waiting room, kind of an intake space, restroom, et cetera, and is ready to go out and to meet the needs of our county residents where they are. Really brings us full circle back to our founding Sisters of Mercy, who were pioneers in going out and meeting with people where they were, and they did it with leprosy. And we're going to do it related to a public health response with COVID-19 and also brain health. Initially, this unit, we started our vision about five years ago, so even before there was a global pandemic. And with that, we thought we would go out, we would do some prevention, and we would do some primary care for those in our community that maybe had barriers, such as no transportation, no insurance, or maybe historically just didn't trust healthcare. And that was our idea. And then as we moved kind of closer to realizing this vision, two things happened. One, the global pandemic. And two, we conducted a community health needs assessment that gave us some solid information in terms of what are the significant community health needs that we need to be addressing now without delay. So related to pandemic, that's one of the most beautiful things about a mobile unit is you can pivot it, leverage it, to meet whatever is the need of the county, of the communities that we serve. So we very quickly realized we would then pivot into. quickly realized we would then pivot into the COVID-19 vaccination and booster response. We're hoping, we know you heard from Patrice this morning, we're hoping starting November 8th, we can work with our county health department, our visiting nurses association, and get out and start doing a pediatric COVID-19 response for kids with our therapy dog in tow, hopefully to make that a better experience for them. When we conducted our community health needs assessment, three significant community health needs arose. It was access to healthcare. It was obesity, with 40% of Dubuque County adults classified as obese. And it was brain health, not in a particular order. But that was when we surveyed our community, they said, "We do not have access to care, especially with brain health. There are delays. We do not have timely access. We are struggling, and we need help." So the pandemic, the community health needs assessment helped us to leverage and pivot to get us to the proposal that's in front of us, to help to begin to move the needle on improving these health outcomes. And I will say that, you know, our county health department and our city of Dubuque Public Health were granted extensions because of pandemic. So typically, we collaborate with them. We have a collaborative to complete our community health needs assessment. And unfortunately, hospitals, or fortunately, were not allowed, were not granted extensions. We had to proceed with that, and we did that collaboratively with Hillcrest Family Services, Leaders in Brain Health, and Unity Point, and working together to come up with some strategies, some health improvement plans, if you will, again, to move the needle on these health outcomes. So the idea with the mobile unit, and here we are on Slide 1, probably 10 minutes into the presentation, but the idea is to complement and enhance existing good work already happening in our community. So this is not to duplicate. This is not to get in and do something that somebody else is doing. This is to work with those partners that are already doing this and to say, you know, where aren't you getting in the county? Where can we go to help to extend the work that you're doing and to work together? Had some nice work with, meeting with Crescent Community Health Services recently, on working together to serve the needs of high priority ZIP Code 52001, which is designated by our government as a ZIP Code with a lot of poverty and need, including brain health. Michelle has up here, the unit has a $50,000 handicap accessible entrance, which makes it convenient to serve anybody that would have either bariatric need, wheelchair, walker, that sort of thing. Next slide. Kind of the mission check-in area. You know, we want to go out and, you know, be with people in a way that they trust, that we're not just there to do brain health. We're not just there to, you know, have them get a COVID vaccination if there's hesitancy in that regard. We're not just there to screen their hypertension, their diabetes, their cancer, all of it together, one full package, including the social determinants of health, you know, making sure that people have education and food, if they're food insecure and these sorts of things. But doing it all together in an integrated way, as if to say, we see you, we see the barriers that you are struggling with, and we want to work together with you to get through that and to bring you some stabilization so that you're well and you're okay, and your quality of life is therefore improved. Next slide. This is a visual of one of the exam rooms, and maybe we can go to the next slide, might show the other one. So they're functional in a way that they could serve multiple purposes. And remember that I said we can kind of pivot as to the need, whether it's dentistry or mammography or the brain health component. They're private, they're HIPAA protected. Some mobile medical units around the country use curtains or have kind of an open space. Ours are fully enclosed rooms where their privacy is protected and with some additional chairs and seating for loved ones or whoever we might be working with. Next slide. Restroom, next slide. We do have before you two letters of support, our medical directors, if you will. Dr. Michael Profsky is a psychiatrist and has talked openly recently about the challenges of our county residents in terms of accessing timely care or not being able to get to care because of barriers such as transportation, especially in rural areas, especially pediatric need. And he is an integral part of our vision. Next slide. Dr. Patrick Gordon, family medicine physician, our medical director of the unit as well. So you kind of have this, you know, you have the family medicine physician, you have the psychiatrist, and kind of try to break it out. Like, how much of our time would be for a physical help? How much of our time would be for COVID-19 response? How much of our time would be for brain health? And we've sliced it and diced it and pulled it apart, and it's really not 30%, 30%, 30%. I mean, it's really integrated. And the idea being that if we can get out in front of individuals who do not historically seek care, their illnesses are chronic, they progress, and ends up being a burden on our sheriff's department, our emergency department, our county jails. If we can get out and be with them and meet all these needs simultaneously in a trusting with them environment, that we would have maybe a little bit more success with that. Next slide. Just talk a little bit about this and then invite Michelle to share, too. But the idea's a phased-in approach with our mobile medical unit. The unit's been delivered. We're very excited about that. We've had some meet and greets, and we've been tooling it around the county so individuals can see the unit. We've had the opportunity to talk to our Board of Health here in Dubuque and really see it as a tool for our health department, for our Board of Health, for our emergency management, incident command. Also could be useful if there's a disaster in our community for triaging and meeting those needs as well. But if you think of a phased-in approach, these first couple months will be pretty much dedicated to COVID-19 vaccinations, boosters, COVID-19 pediatric COVID response, again, getting out to where our county and VNA are not currently reaching, influenza inoculations, helping those that do not have insurance get that presumptive Medicaid. That's a process that we can do on the unit so that that may help remove a barrier that individuals may be experiencing. Brain health education and healthy coping and screening and referral will be initial on the unit. Again, with the help of maybe a therapy dog and a psychiatric nurse and therapist/social worker. We'll deliver some nutrient-dense food tote bags and do some obesity education and physical exercise education. We'll do preventative screenings for diabetes, hypertension, stroke, and cancer. But most importantly, we'll really be kind of feet on the ground, foot to foot, door to door, farm to farm, just getting out there and being with people and helping them with whatever it is they may need. As we move closer to spring, we'll see the addition of nurse practitioner onboard, could be slightly earlier than that, to really do some brain health diagnosis and medications and medical diagnosis medication, additional time throughout the community, and then moving that forward. You see the plan here really takes us to 2024, which again coincides with that three-year China cycle. So we conducted a survey with the community. Now we have three years to implement a plan to help the community with those needs that were identified. Michelle, now, talk to us a little bit about our scheduling tool and maybe what that would look like.
And that's what's awesome about the whole mobile unit and our schedule, that we are flexible. So I kind of temporarily put up a plan, like if we get the go-ahead on Tuesday that the CDC approves the pediatric vaccinations, then we will dive into the schools. I have emails and that out to the Dubuque Community Schools. I know our pharmacies is working with the Western Dubuque Community Schools and also the Catholic Schools, which is kind of, you know, that would be our plan then, starting next Monday, is to get ready to go and hit the different school districts and be, you know, somewhere for four hours and have the kids, you know, come through, get their vaccination. And again, at that same time, do some brain, you know, education. There's a lot of anxiety in kids that were getting feedback and just the stress of what they see in their parents going through the pandemic, and just helping them cope. Because even talking with Dr. Profsky, a big part of our brain health approach is prevention and education. You know, he said that the kids that already have resources, have appointments they can go to, but it's more catching people early. A lot of times, the first time a family has, you know, experienced with brain health, it's in a crisis situation or in the emergency room where their kids are threatening to, you know, kill themselves. So our plan is to really get out earlier, hit the kids in the grade schools, and talk to people, get them talking, send home questionnaires, get them back to us, you know, get their feedback. So schools, should we get that pediatric version approved, would be a big focus. All of our vulnerable populations, you know, the kids are in school, so it's a great way to kind of get in with the Marshall Lees, you know, with the kids up and all over just to help them. We also are going to hit the, you know, there we have different parishes and that that we're going to go to, you know, people congregate together in those settings. So if we can just pull up to a place that's already has an event going on, I put down there the inter turkey giveaway. You know, if we can have our bus there that day, you know, would be awesome for people that are coming for their free meals or to pick up, then we also offer them, supply them a vaccination flu and COVID at the same time as they want. So we're just trying to be radically convenient and team up with our partners that already have things in place. I just pulled a little bit of information on some data that I received just over the other, we've been studying different mobile unit programs for the last five years, and the national average return on investment for every dollar that we spend, it saves us 12. So we're really, you know, the average cost of a mobile program is right around $429,000 a year. Ours, when we look at my budget, figuring it out, ours was a little bit closer to 500 after the first year, for the year two and three. But we're also, these mobile units, programs really haven't focused in on brain health. They never really had that component. So that's where ours might run a little bit higher, because we're bringing on that nurse practitioner in brain health. We have the psychiatry backup to help us really treat where the need is. You know, just to help us in the long run on saving emergency department visits and costs.
When you think of like county money and how it would be spent, and there's different buckets of money that you potentially could pull from, you talked about Fund 10 with the previous proposal. I think our target is to reach 10,000 people in this three-year cycle. So if you kind of look at what that would boil down to with a million-dollar ask, it's about $100 per individual. We believe this is lifesaving work. We've appreciated historically working Mercy One with the county on our opioid response. That, too, was lifesaving work and helped our most vulnerable and those that didn't have access or didn't have insurance get medication to stabilize them. We see this as similar, getting out in kind of a broader way, not just addictive medicine, but brain health overarching, that if there's a $100 investment for 10,000 county residents over this three-year period, that that would be really a bargain if it meant lives saved. And I'll let Michelle continue, but I just feel compelled to say, you know, that work we were doing previously with opioid response, there was need before the pandemic. So when an epidemic and a pandemic converge upon each other, you know, this is what you're hearing proposals for brain health, because those needs are just ever so enhanced. And we are seeing deaths, and we are seeing suicide attempts. And we're seeing them at the middle school level in our community. We're seeing people on our bridges. We're seeing, so we are a very resourceful community, many proposals in front of you with good initiative around this. So we can do better than where we're at currently to advance this area.
And this just kind of shows the targeted populations that we would be after, also those that are uninsured and publicly insured, to really help save money in the long run for the county. Those are different percentages nationwide that it does impact.
Some of these slides are more for your reference, and you can look through them with a little more detail. I know with time, we want to make sure we have time for questions. You know, this is new for us. This is a new, this is mission-driven growth, if you will, at a time when our medical centers in the region have been impacted significantly financially by the pandemic. So Mercy's investment in a $250,000 customized Winnebago, about $225,000 a year operationally for the next few years, to get it up, to get it going, to get it moving quickly, I'm very, very proud of. And, you know, today, we invite you to be our ongoing partner to deliver some of this at whatever level you are able to invest with us. Michelle has done a lot of work on breaking it down, where the funding is, where it would go. These are our best estimates. You know, fuel costs are high right now, you know, and if our entire proposal is not integrated funded solely, then we'll maybe scale it back a bit, or we'll adjust. So any investment in this work, we believe, is a good investment in our county. We believe it's lifesaving work, and we believe that this is broken down to the best of our ability at this point, being a new approach for us as well, new innovative approach. Okay, there we go. So with that, Chairperson McDonough, supervisors would entertain your questions?
I have a few for you. Is this just encompassing Dubuque County or other counties?
So initially, we'll be focused on Dubuque County. Mercy One's Eastern Iowa Region does include counties to the north and the south and slightly west. So the broader vision is to extend to those areas, maybe with other vehicles, a fleet, if you will, understanding that one Winnebago, that that's a lot of geography to cover. The MHDS region serves some different counties. So for brain health specific, for that east-central region of MHDS, you know, that takes some thinking around how you would begin to serve some of those other areas. We have worked successfully with other counties and creative funding streams. And I know that's something that Chairperson Baker even had asked way back when, like, you know, we might invest in this work a little bit, but where else are you going to get your funds? Can't all be the county's responsibility. And so we pride ourselves in, you know, just working collaboratively with other areas, so city, county, state, federal, private sector, to be able to sustain this type of mission-driven work. But initially, we're going to keep it home base. We're going to stay Dubuque County because there is much, much, much work to do in this regard.
Okay, and then second, there's roughly 21 towns in the county. Two of them have healthcare centers, so that leaves 19. What's the plan for a schedule? Like, okay, we go to Farley one day, we go to Cascade one day, something like that?
Yeah, and it'll kind of cover that area, like we could be, you know, in Farley in the morning, you know, and then Eppworth in the afternoon. So we'll just kind of, you know, block it out, but take advantage of the whole day. We're out in this area. Let's hit two of the towns on that same day.
The bus will have a scheduling tool, and this can serve us well if we're doing ongoing brain health work, such as a counseling session with somebody in a rural area that doesn't have transportation to get to Hillcrest or to get to Crescent or to get to one of our great providers in the community. That, you know, we will use that technology, that scheduling tool, laptops, iPads. We have a hotspot built into it, printer, scanner. All that good technology is built into that unit so that we will have a cadence. People will know, and that's our medical center, President K. Take it says, you know, we need to make sure people know what we're delivering and that when we're going to be there. That's her big ask of us with this ministry, if you will. So there will be a schedule on our website, a link you can go to to see where the unit's going to be, what it's going to be doing. But it will have generally, if you think of a loop around those areas that you've identified, to, you know, provide the care that we're providing.
So you would go to, say, my house? So, you would go to, say, my house if I wanted you to come to my house?
You know, I think we have talked about that. I mean, really, you know, there's, there's kind of some backpacks that we can take and we can go out and truly be with people door-to-door. That takes a little bit of work. We want to build trust in those areas. You can't just drive up a farmer's lane and show up at his door, even though he may be suicidal.
Asking that because in your presentation, you said we go from farm to farm, residence to residence, and I'm like, okay, can they schedule you to come to their farm or whatever because they have no transportation?
They have a feed store in that community. And we kind of pull in there and they know, like, you know, the second, fourth, you know, Tuesday of the month, we're going to be there at that zip code, offering these sorts of things. So, it's not just the crazy bus, and I, and I say that because I'm very sensitive to words, you know, it's not just the mental health bus, the brain health bus, but it's the, it's the, it's the thorough, integrated care bus that does everything. So, if somebody sees Melissa get on there, they don't know if it's because of my generalized anxiety disorder, if it's because I have a mole I need checked out for, that might be cancerous, or because I finally decided I want to get my COVID booster, you know, that it's, it's doing all those things. But, and then we'll also have paper, paper copies at places of worship, at higher stages, at the Dream Center, at the Multicultural Family Center, at the libraries, because not everybody has technology to get on our website and see that schedule or where it's going to be.
To pique my interest with the COVID piece, so my first question is, is this deployed yet? Has it been deployed?
November 8.
So, it hasn't been deployed yet. Do you have any plans to deploy it in the short term for either COVID testing or COVID vaccination?
Both. Yeah. I mean, we will go out first with pharmacy because that's kind of, I mean, it's kind of the perfect timing of year that people need their flu shots and if the pediatric thing goes through too. So, that's kind of our in, two different places, people to get to know us for that reason, but then do that underlying, you know, individual, one-on-one assessment, you know, how are you doing? You know, where are your biggest struggles? So, it's also, yes, I'll give you both your shots today, that's kind of our front, but then I'm also going to help you with any brain health issues that you may have or health, health issues.
I mean, very interested in supporting that initiative. We're still in the pandemic, we still have, you know, COVID rampant in our community. And so, if this could be deployed to help for vaccination and testing, I'm very, very interested, short-term, immediately with either rescue funds or other funds that are available. The, the brain health play, I'm a little less convinced on at this moment, but not shutting it down, but I'm less convinced that that would be a lead. But if you can deploy this, I think that's what the community needs. Quick follow-up question is, would you allow some either contractual agreements that whether the Board of Health or whether the incident management team or whether emergency management, if the county does fund this, would have some say in the deployment in various instances such as wellness, general wellness or in emergency types?
We would look to them for that to inform us.
Because we don't know where all the needs are, but they do, you know, a lot of them have different needs, so we would be teaming up with them and saying, hey, I need, you know, there's a group in Postville that Crescent can't get to, so, you know, can we go there?
So, hypothetically, so we had testing early on in the pandemic in Eppworth and a few other places, and then Test Iowa kind of put a stop to that, which was very frustrating. So, an example, when we were out in Eppworth and we had the large contingent crowds and cars gathering and then plenty of volunteers and was at our emergency management, potentially you could be deployed there to, to give assistance.
Absolutely. Gwen Haldriscoll is not with us today. She works closely with that team from Mercy One and the Sheriff's Department.
Very much involved, yes.
And so, she will be, I mean, she's very much a part of this work and will assist Michelle and I with, with making sure that it's a coordinated effort in that regard and that we are getting to all those areas that may feel not abandoned, but just like, what about us, you know? We can't get into that testing site or we, you know, we're not sure if our child needs a vaccination or not. We're kind of on the fence about that. Or, so, that, that very much is. I mean, so when I say public health response, it's very much COVID-19 and it's very much brain health because we know that's where, where the significant need is today, now, and that we can adjust.
I appreciate you putting it together and having it arrive and getting to this far as, you know, without any county support. And so, congratulations so far on your success in getting it ready to be launched and deployed.
Thank you. We're really, really excited about it and all that are with us today in the room, all that are on Zoom with us. We are looking to collaborate with all of our community partners on this, not just our county, to have this be a sustained ministry, if you will, to get out and help people with whatever is, is their need and their barrier.
Even like the homeless, foot care is a big thing, you know, and that, you know, bringing a podiatrist out with us or doing telehealth and washing of the feet, you know, really just kind of getting back to seeing where the need is. So, that's what's kind of nice about our buses, we really can, you know, drive to wherever the need is.
State Representative Chuck Isidhar is chatting about our pediatric COVID response and that we have several pharmacists working with us to kick that off. We believe November 8 will be the soonest, just because of when we receive that final approval, that they're approved, they need to be shipped. So, then they arrive and then we can get there.
We had a mayor's meeting, I don't know, more than a week ago and addressing this topic, just generally with mayors, you know, conversational. And they were bringing up folks who can't pay their water bills or folks who are coming into their city offices in need. And the mayors kind of said that when you come to each of their communities, they would like to welcome you and be first on your bus and so that there's a welcome center and it's, people see, they really are excited that there's a brain health screening component to this because they know that that's what their community is suffering from.
And having the mayor be there first, I mean, that shows, you know, the mayor trusts us and, you know, that may help people come.
The Clinton Board of Supervisors have invited us to come before them. For Clinton County, we do have a Mercy One Medical Center in that community. Anything that would happen with that out of Dubuque County would likely involve another vehicle and another team and again, it kind of broadens the scope of what this is. But again, significant need to the south of us as well.
Maybe I'll test you a little bit on that. So, you said you're going to start in Dubuque County and I heard reference to Clinton and Postville. Both of those are not in Dubuque County. So, if we fund this, what is the, you know, what is the agreement that it would be available X amount of days in Dubuque County? You don't have to answer that, but that's, I'm already getting nervousness that we fund this and it's going to Postville, which is needed, Clinton, which is needed, but, you know, that's not our constituency. And so, maybe I'm not asking to answer that question, but, you know, if funding does come, the requirement we put on American Rescue Funds is for Dubuque County, certainly our Fund 10 is regional, and so that, that would be a little different scenario.
Quite taken. We're well aware and consider ourselves experts in that regard with using funding streams that are only for certain things. These are for Dubuque County, these are only for Dubuque County uninsured, these are for Iowa only. We work with Substance Abuse Services Center, there's going to be any Iowa resident, nobody over the bridge, this federal funds can only serve this, can't pay for salaries. So, we've used multiple funding streams successfully before to do certain things for certain areas. While that poses challenges, it can be done.
Thank you.
It pretty much was for our Dubuque County, like the fuel, we'll have more fuel costs when we go other places and that will come from other funding. But our area and that, it was, it came to that for the, for the Dubuque County catchment area.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll make a motion to recess for five minutes. Second.
Motion to second to recess for five minutes. All of you would say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
When we come back, we'll begin with St. Mark. We'll come back into session. We have St. Mark Youth and Richmond here with us today. And if you want to give your name and address for the record?
Yes. Hello, everyone. Caitlin Schmidt with St. Mark Youth and Richmond, 1201 Locust Street, Dubuque, Iowa. So, thank you, supervisors, for the opportunity to share our proposal today. St. Mark is, I think you might be aware, as you've supported us over the years, St. Mark is a nonprofit that provides out-of-school programming, both in the school year and summer, serving students pre-K through 5 in both Dubuque, Dyersville and Piastah. So, throughout the county, we're offering our programming. These, these programs fill gaps for our families, targeting students who have both in academic areas, reading math, but also social-emotional learning. And we've been doing social-emotional learning services through these programs for more than, we're a 30-year organization, but we've been doing social-emotional learning more than 10 years. So, this brain health opportunity is something that we're thinking of targeting very specific needs for sites that we've had increased challenges coming back into schools and in person since COVID. So, our request is for $25,000 to support those students, and I'll get in a little bit more on how that will happen, and meet their brain health needs that we've seen increase over the last couple of months. So, the pandemic, we know children have had so much disruption, having schools closed, they're coming back in person now, and we've been offering our programs in person this school year. And we've seen increased behavioral challenges with students, unsafe environments or unsafe situations that we're trying to provide that safe, trusting environment for them to work through that in our after-school setting. So, in particular, we've had some sites that have come up as priority sites, and this is a new kind of language for St. Mark to use, and we're trying to make this a strategic focus to now serve these sites in a better way. So, part of that is having our kind of reallocation of attention to these sites with our staff. Our typically staff programs pull from a lot of the college-age students. We're now seeing that we need to have our full-time program coordinators there to really model what safe, trusting relationship building is with those students. So, that is a major component of our request, is having that staff component be there and specifically through this fiscal year, through May. And we, as a result, that will kind of increase the dosage and the level of attention for social-emotional learning that can happen at those sites. And just overall, to give you some more background about what St. Mark does in relation to social-emotional learning, as I said, we've been doing this for years and it's as small as, you know, working on some breathing exercises and having mindfulness practice for the students, and it's as large as having staff that our students trust. So, we work on competencies and skills for the students to grow in that include self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making, those are kind of the five core competencies of social-emotional learning that we implement. So, again, mindfulness practices, having direct lessons around different self-regulation pieces, curriculum to help students regulate their emotions if they're having, you know, some big feelings, to work through that and make a plan for how they want to move forward in the program, forward with their next, next decisions. And the staff that we have, you know, we're training them in what, what our model is and what our best practices are. And so, that component is kind of where this next piece of the, our request is. We have staff who are trained, our program directors are trained in a STAR Trauma and Resilience Curriculum. They are certified trainers in six-second social-emotional intelligence. And just as of last week, they are now trained youth mental health first aid, so they will be able to facilitate those trainings with others. So, we want to have that component be a new element in training our staff that are onsite working with the students. And we see that training happening in winter or spring of 2022, so that they would take that learning and implement it into the second semester of the school year. We also collaborate with families and the schools. And, you know, the schools, we have advisory groups and we're hearing from them that these same challenges are mirrored at, at their school day level too, and that they're, they're teaching children to be in school again as kind of just the baseline of where the needs are. So, we're walking alongside them and doing that and helping. and helping those students regain those skills. And ultimately, when it comes to brain health, these types of skills are really about prevention, so that future challenges in regards to brain health, risky behaviors, that that's all reduced. And that, you know, we have students that come with adverse childhood experiences already, and the pandemic certainly highlighted that for us. So we want to best be able to respond to those needs in students in the out-of-school time space. And I thought I'd also share some of, you know, I speak to our experience in doing this kind of programming, our outcomes from previous programming. You know, social-emotional health and brain health is a little bit difficult to measure, but we do do pre- and post-assessments, as well as survey all our stakeholders. So just in this last summer, 2021, we had 50% of the students have their scores increased in the assessment tool that we use, which is DEVERIL Student Strengths Assessment. And then 90% of all of the students either maintain where they started at a typical percentile or increase. So we're seeing either students who need that movement of growth having that or at least maintaining where they started and that they're not falling into a lower category. So and then, you know, school year assessments have been difficult, but the most recent year that we have for school year, we had 36% of the students make significant gains in their scores using this assessment. So, you know, we're trying to measure and make sure that we're having accountability and having these programs be effective. So we're committed to doing that, too, for this program. We would use those measurement tools. In the application, I provided a quote from a parent, but I have another one here, too. This is from a survey, anonymous survey. A parent says, "My youngest has done a full 360 in his behavior. Went from three to four for ails every week to none at all." So that's some of the anecdotal stuff that this is carrying on into families' homes and into the school days. And then I'll just share this other one that's also in that grant application. So a summer parent shares, "I've seen my daughter more bubbly in herself. The pandemic took a toll on my daughter's social-emotional health, and I'm thankful she's been able to re-engage with friendships. She's been so excited to go to her program each day." So some great anecdotal evidence of how this is impacting the families that we're serving. So to go into how this specific $25,000 request has kind of touched on it here, but we are seeing these priority sites have the level of need that is making us want to reallocate and shift our focus and have that staff response and the program coordinators that are trained at that higher level really be able to respond to those needs, while also modeling for those other site staff to be able to support the students there. And then the Youth Mental Health First Aid training is going to be open to all of our programs that serve the entire county, so that all staff will have the opportunity to take this learning and respond to the needs. So Youth Mental Health First Aid, while I'm not one of the lucky people that got to get facilitated training last week, but it's really about wrapping the arms around children and understanding the signals and signs of how, you know, what might need to respond to them in a mental health crisis or not, it can be just kind of the behavioral stuff, too, that we respond to. I have a timeline in the grant application, but again, I think, and this is really about our school year programs, which will be ongoing through May of 2022, with that training component coming in in the winter, maybe very early spring timeframe, to then be able to take that and implement it. And then we will be conducting assessments as well. So the priority sites, Audubon and Lincoln, will serve 70 children. We anticipate around 30 staff receiving this training throughout the Dubuque County programs that we offer. And then we'll aim for a benchmark that we hope to see as around 75% of students maintaining or increasing in their social-emotional skills, which we'll be measuring during the school year as well. And then another component of where this takes us in a larger sense of where St. Mark's headed and offering social-emotional services, we hope to spread our training to other organizations and partner with them. But this being a newer training, we want to pilot it within our own staff and then hopefully be able to offer this to others in the community. And this kind of investment is a really good jumping off point for us to be able to do that. And then we have the budget before you, so I am open to any questions that you may have.
Hi, welcome. Caitlin, thank you. Wonderful presentation. Thanks for sharing this with me. I noticed under your funding sources, you've got a couple different funding sources, which are tremendous. And then the largest being the, what's called the 21st Century Community Learning Grant from the Department of Education. How long have you had that grant?
We have had that, this current grant, we're in year three. And then it technically ends at three years, but we get four to five years of extended funding. We've had this grant for previous years, but we will no longer be able to renew these applications. And we've been working on this for the last two or three years of how we're going to replace those funds for sustainability. That involves other grant opportunities, just general fundraising efforts as well.
So well done getting the funding, and I think the ask from the county is pretty modest. And I would be happy to be a part of your team, so you have my support.
Very much, supervisor McDonough.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you responding and bringing something with sharper focus to us for consideration with the Fund 10 Brain Health Fund, so.
Well, I thank you for the opportunity. And I know that the pandemic has been challenging for a lot of us. And I just know these kids would benefit from the support like this to have that targeted focus, so.
Thank you Caitlin. And our last application for today is from, it was, I think it was in the packet, correct? It's from Hillcrest regarding an elevator.
There was two, wasn't there?
Pardon?
It was two requests, wasn't it? Like the elevator and the access me-care.
They sent some more information on Opportunity Zone, but the request today is for the elevator.
Okay.
I guess, you know, they're our last presenter. You can ask questions about other issues, certainly, but they've been here presenting a lot of other things. We've asked them to come back and talk specifically about the elevator, which was a request they made during our early targeted community investment program. And they didn't include it in the ARPA funding. So we reached out to see if they wanted to have us consider funding the elevator with Fund 10. So, good morning, John.
Good morning. So I'm John Bellini from Hillcrest Family Services, 2005 Asbury Road, Dubuque, Iowa. Here today to talk about the elevator project. So I'd like to give you a little history of where that would be going. So that would be going into our New Day Walk-In Center. So our New Day Walk-In Center is funded through the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic and through SAMSA on a $2.2 million yearly award. Most of that startup funding was provided by that grant. We recently also received funding from the ECR for about $113,000 to $114,000 for additional staffing for extra hours. The operation is open Monday through Friday, eight to five. In the soft opening in the first two months, we've seen 180 consumers come into the center. So they're walking in uninsured, underinsured, running out of medications, in need of immediate brain health service delivery. So we believe that the need is there. What we are doing with this project is really looking at expanding services. We also have funding for substance abuse services, wellness services, peer support services, and are looking to expand that space to the upstairs, which is an open floor pan that can be developed. Initially, to get up to that piece, you got to have the elevator for the ADA requirements. So we're looking at that funding to jumpstart the project, to look at building out the second floor for the New Day Walk-In Center. So pretty straightforward process, about $100,000. This is coming from Epic Construction, which constructed the building that we're housed in currently. And believe it's pretty straightforward. The shaft is built in there. It just needs some masonry work and some electrical work in the elevator to be put in. So it should be a pretty quick project. I don't know if there's questions about that, but it's pretty straightforward.
What do you plan to do with the upstairs, John?
With the upstairs, we plan to expand the New Day Walk-In Center. So plans would be to add additional substance abuse services. Plan would be to have a space, a welcoming space, for not only our organization but other providers for brain health resources. Again, additional wellness space or peer support space, as well as other brain health service delivery.
I'd be very interested in having you create something about the expansion of the substance abuse services that you've talked about when we go into our, we're going into budget time. And that isn't funded by the Brain Health Fund. Fund 10 doesn't provide for substance abuse, but we have that ability to do that funding at county level. And no one's ever really worked with us about that, what services you could provide. And, you know, Mike and I were certainly at the Regional Governing Board meeting last week, and John, you may have been virtually, but, you know, that they're doing detox and sobering, and those are county-funded. Those are not state-funded, but those are county-funded services. They're doing those at our access centers in Lynn County and Johnson, but, you know, that's a missing component here that we don't have. I greatly appreciate your New Day Walk-In Center, and I was pleased that we got some funding to you from the region. And I think that'll be probably ongoing, I'm hoping, more robustly. But I don't know, you know, that's, the second floor right now is vacant, empty at Hillcrest. It's not even sticks, it's just construction blocks.
No, it's an open shell, which allows for the stick build or the creative build with community partners. So absolutely interested in expanding that space. We believe the need is there. Like we said, 180 clients in a soft opening without marketing it out. So we believe the need here in the community.
Right.
And we're also well aware that the two access centers that are, we're currently in agreement to move our clients to when we can't meet their needs locally, are serving as guides for us in many ways. We hope to build out the access hub, up to and including a lot of those things that can be included, both in access centers and then stopping, obviously, at the things that we can't. So coming out of that Regional Governing Board, which you referenced, Supervisor McDonough, one of the, I've met Abby Ferenczi, I think it is, on a couple occasions in law enforcement and mobile crisis discussions. Following that, we had a conversation about spending more time together. Our folks at a New Day Walk-In getting down and spending some time and seeing the progress they're making at the Lynn County Access Center, bringing those folks up to see what we're doing. And so part of the challenge, and I know Jay has asked this of Hillcrest before, the question you did, what's the plan for the upstairs? It's a little fluid right now. I mean, I think we could nail down and say sobering units, you know, things related to substance abuse, et cetera. But we also know that there are other opportunities to request right now. And we have other facilities within walking distance of the first four walk-in center, as well as whatever we build upstairs that may also serve the needs. So it's a matter of figuring out the ultimate flow, the ecosystem that makes sense for clients, as well as who the partners are that are going to be interested in coming onboard and sharing space and delivering services side by side with us.
We would like to talk about the second piece, which was this access me-care, only because of its reduction of our original ask, and like to explain a little bit about that.
And jumping with just one question or request, can either Supervisor McDonough or yourself explain or summarize what occurred in the region meeting last week and what funding was approved?
Say that again?
What funding was approved last week at the region?
For Hillcrest.
Yeah, was there good news?
So, yeah, with good news.
Please share.
We have submitted to expand the operating hours of our walk-in center into the evening by four hours, Monday through Friday, and then over the weekends, expanded hours. It effectively paid for three additional staff that are typically not able to draw down funds either from our existing federal grant, which we've leveraged about $2 million of to get the walk-in center up to where it's at right now. So this is $218,000 roughly annually that we requested, prorated. It was about $114 for the remaining number of months once we hire people, as well as about, you know, seven to eight months of administrative time to get a lead on hiring those in those positions. As I said, they would typically not be able to be covered under the CCBA seat or they'd be billing to Medicaid or private insurances. And we therefore benefit from having that cost to us offset.
Very good. Thank you. And congratulations to Hillcrest, and thank you Supervisor McDonough for taking that request.
Yeah, and that's, it's, none of this is on me, truly none of this. This is all Hillcrest because, I appreciate that, but this is...
You're on the board and you represent that, so you...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But understand, they...
We appreciate it. It's a win.
They went forward and drew down $2 million of federal funding, and that's why we have an access hub, because you did that. You did that. That wasn't the region, that wasn't me, that was you. And you have created an access hub and a tremendous opportunity here for Dubuque County residents. And, I mean, that's stunning that you did that during a pandemic, that you took that leadership role. So we have an access hub, not by anything that the supervisors did. Hillcrest did that. So I'm going to be anxious to hear back when you start to collect your data. How does that fit with law enforcement and hospital? I mean, all the things we saw at the Regional Governing Board that Lynn and Johnson are now reporting out, eventually you'll have that reporting out, too. But, you know, as it relates to what we're talking about today, that unmet need that still exists is substance abuse. And you don't have funding for that, and you're trying to put together the pieces. And we have not historically done a great deal of funding in that area, but maybe we could.
And we have actively been working on that, and John can speak to that. If I cut you off, I'm sorry. And we've reached out to FAFI locally and ASAC as, you know, potential partners, you know, offering a lot of opportunity and value, we believe, in partnership.
But that, the other reason that the substance abuse discussion is important is that that is, we could fund this out of federal money. So we get the elevator out of brain health funding, capital expense, it's there. But there's a partnership role we could have that you have to look to the county. The region isn't going to touch substance abuse. So that could potentially be a further discussion point as we look at our federal funding from ARPA or even our own county funding, right?
Agreed, agreed. But, you know, still, the point is, well done. And 100% of the region money comes from the counties, and the supervisors, including yourself, manages and oversees that board. So I'm very pleased that the Regional Board approved the funding to Hillcrest. So very excited about that. And obviously, yeah, Supervisor McDonough said, very much look forward to additional services related to substance abuse as well. The elevator, I'm lukewarm on, to be honest. You know, I'm like, you know, somebody's got to build it, somebody's got to pay for it. And so if we're the group that has to do that, I would be supportive of it, but I would much rather put the taxpayers' money into services and people.
Some examples that just, if you care to know, like Lynn County, they did pay for enhanced lighting, security cameras for providers. And that list that Lynn County had was illustrative of that some of the stuff's just, get it out of, get it off your books, use the brain health funding, spend down money that has to go to get the things you need to be better operational.
Oh, agreed. I remember seeing the list. It was awesome that Lynn County had two years ago. So, yeah.
Well, this is what they did, 12, was it 12 or 17 projects that they... 17? And they were, so they were, you know, their fund balances larger than ours, but all the same. So did you, and John, you said you, do you have questions about the elevator?
No, I was just going to echo my colleague's sentiments on super job on the hub. I'm actually a little warmer on the elevator than what Jay is. I toured it.
Always looking out.
And there is a lot of potential for that second floor.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, a lot of potential. So I'm a little warmer on that than obviously Jay, but definitely look forward to working with yous on it.
And I am as well.
One more comment on the elevator. I know we think of it as infrastructure because it is. But it really does allow Hillcrest to invest our dollars into our people, right? So the elevator probably isn't going to happen until we have at least a certain threshold of margin in which to make that happen, because we've been, we've been working on recruit-retain and bonus plans that are holding people over that haven't seen an increase but have maintained their employment with Hillcrest because of the pandemic. And therefore... And therefore, you know, as we talk about these other things, we're trying to play offense too. And that's why you see a New Day Walk-In Center leveraging our CCBHC. So these things that are infrastructure are going to wait until we find a funding source for them. If we're needing to choose between giving those raises or giving a situational bonus or whatever it, it can be that's above and beyond what people get paid routinely to say thank you.
But we need to be clear that if we fund $100,000 or $50,000 and you're going to, this is a communication from the Fund 10 balance, you can't hold it, Mike. It's got to go out the door to that point, right, for the elevator? Because the money's got to be dispersed, gone and spent.
Absolutely. I entirely agree. My point is simply that I would like you all not to think about it as just, you know, a piece of metal and electricity. I want you to think about the investment that allows us to make into our people. That's all I'm simply saying.
Okay. So I, I think if we have no more other questions or comments about the elevator, there is opportunity here in time for you to address the things that in our two weeks ago fumbled attempt to have conversation with Hillcrest. If you would like to bring to light other things that you want to fine tune for us, now is a good time.
Absolutely, we do. So we have a, if you can bring up that Access Me Care piece. So we, we would like to fine tune, we had an ask for $393,000 for Access Me Care. We firmly believe in the software platform. And what I would like to tell you is you're talking about having data and information and tools and resources to, to see where the outcomes are and to provide a community needs assessment. This is the tool that will do that. So this platform has multiple entities, all healthcare entities on the platform, all higher education in, in the counties on the platform, all pre-K education is on the platform, multiple social service and nonprofit organizations are on the platform engaged. So what we're asking for is help with year two of the funding to keep the momentum of what we're doing. We're asking for expansion of that product to allow for integration and engagement and outreach. For an example, we're asking for payment of the multilingual capability. It would translate Marshallese at 50,000 words in text to people of the Marshallese community. It would translate Spanish and multiple other languages to people in our community. It will allow that platform to be used, the multicultural family center, allow for that translation. So it's reducing the barriers, which oftentimes add to the stigma of accessing brain health services in our communities. So we firmly believe that that engagement and, and that platform is needed. It also provides, in, in the community health and care planning section, it provides for access to the data. So we, we, in this platform, we're asking Hudea to provide licenses to community partners through this platform. So Dubuque County could have access to the data to, to do their own community needs assessment. The city of Dubuque could have access to data to do a citywide needs assessment. So there's certain licenses that are allowed to, to review the data from all parties, not just Hillcrest, from all parties on the platform. So we believe we're providing basically a community need in the hands of a, of a technology resource instead of all, instead of the outreach process and the cumbersome process of doing our community needs assessment currently. So we believe that brings value to the county board of supervisors. When you talk about appropriations of money or services needed in the community, this platform would demonstrate the gaps in services and where services are providing good outcomes for the future. So really, our asking for your support. We trimmed it down, and what we trimmed out, to be honest with you, was some community outreach and some resource kits, which we believe that we could trim down. This $232,000 ask, we firmly believe that we can't trim it down and nor do we want to if you want the value and the, and the resources and the data in the future. So we have engagement in the community, partners are signing up. We're asking for support, for your support of this platform to continue to drive it. And this platform is being used in a New Day Walk-In Center and in your community currently with kiosks and tablets. So it'd just be an extension of what we're already doing.
So when the region funded this project initially, you're, you received $125,000?
Yes.
And so, and I've communicated to you, that's my question, really.
Yes.
How do you go from $125,000 to be here before me? I appreciate that it's trimmed down, but it is still a large request.
It is. And those were additional add-on features. So in, in working with the community, the community has talked about the need for, for outcomes and the data tool, and where does that data lie? That was not purchased initially through Access Me Care. What we purchased was the basic platform, the engagement piece. So this, the license piece and how we share that data was an additional piece, which has cost to that. The other additional pieces of the multilingual capability was not initially in that platform. When working with partners, if we're going to work with Multicultural Family Center and work with the Dubuque Community School District, there was discussion of this product can offer this, so why not integrate it into the platform? But again, those pieces were based on our community assessments and community focus groups that we had with multiple providers and multiple partners that had additional functions added to the platform to make its best use.
Why are you not asking the region to fund the, this again? So you did one year with the region, why are you not asking the region to do this again?
I think in part because the region and our, our, you know, evolution with them in this project asked us to shrink our focus to Dubuque and Dubuque County as we get the platform up to a point where we, you know, they would then at that point like to see us bring it into the other surrounding counties that define the ECR. So, you know, we've, we've taken that lead as it relates to what the original ask was, how we modified that on direction from the ECR and where we're at right now as we're seeing more lift in this platform as a result of more participation, participation unique to Dubuque County and Dubuque.
Right, but the translation and the data collection and all, I mean, we are a major player at the region. So having them, whatever we don't fund or can't fund, do you intend to go back to the region and say, okay, now match that funding?
Yeah, I think we would if we had the option.
How can I help you? I want to help you get that opportunity to move this beyond. I have certainly funded things that appear to be Lynn County centric, so they know themselves better, which is what you're saying here, right? You need to know Dubuque and we need Dubuque data. But that supports the entire region. And to get that to be funded through the region, it doesn't a closed door, as I understand it. It is that maybe you're not making that ask, or I'm not helping you make that ask, to get to the region to spend down those funds as well.
Yeah, we'd be more than happy to have a discussion about how to position ourselves best to do that.
I think, I think we'd be open to both options Supervisor McDonough. I, I think it also should be noted though, that the infrastructure of Access Me Care is housed in a New Day. Our outreach is Dubuque County based, at the Dubuque County Fair, at multiple events that we're doing public outreach, is more locally centric than it is region centric, you know, regionalized. So we do believe a portion of this funding is absolutely a Dubuque-based project, but are very open for other funding sources regionally for this as well. Is there any other questions on the Access Me Care piece?
We have been here. Why don't you go through the, the whole process? If I want to get on that, how do I get on to it?
So Access Me Care is a social engagement platform. So it can be used on your phone, it can be used on a desktop. And we have kiosks that can go out into the community based on where people are presenting. Examples would be hospitals, public library, multicultural family center. So what happens is people, organizations onboard, we have about 30 some organizations onboard in, in five areas. We call them quick access buttons. So they're housing, transportation, brain health, primary healthcare and basic needs. What the platform is designed to do is to navigate people through services and connect them through services. So for example, let's say I, I have a healthcare need and I'm on Medicaid and, and so forth. So it would go through that, it would knock down who's taken Medicaid services. It would put you, you know, Crescent up top, would put certain providers. So and then if I needed assistance with Spanish speaking, it, it would drill down based on my needs in presenting that conversation and, and find a provider that fits my needs. What the platform also does, will be doing here in the near future, is a refer to and a refer from function. So I, I could be out in the community, I'm talking to you, Mr. Podoff, and you could say, I have this concern. In six clicks in 90 seconds, I could open my phone, get the services that you need and make a referral to that organization. So oftentimes organizations like Hillcrest will ask somebody to, hey, you know, get your primary healthcare needs done at Crescent. We hope that you get down there, that consumer says, yes, we will. And then we hope and pray in six weeks when we see him again that they did that. Come to find out, they didn't because things came up. We could have assurance that that referral can go through and we could track that referral to service delivery, which again pushes healthcare and brain healthcare to the forefront with accountability and outcomes. So this platform does that. The neat thing about this platform is it also houses all the data information that can be used for community needs assessment. For example, if I have, we've identified that we have 500 missed opportunities at our, our brain health center and it comes to find out is because 300 people couldn't make it because of the transportation issues. We could work with the city of Dubuque's Jewel Service or the county's RTA and say, can we adjust routes? Can we move that route from a block and a half over to our New Day Walk-In Center? That seems that would fix the issue. So we could use data to make informed decisions so that people can reduce the gaps in care. That's it into the nutshell.
Thank you. I just wanted everybody to understand, there's a lot of talking and some people don't really understand what it's about. That's why I just thought it'd be a good time to get it all out.
And your question, if I, if I may Supervisor Podoff earlier about the RV coming down your lane to come to the farm, in, in my head, I think about home and community-based services, right? Where it would be a car coming down the lane to, whether it's to do a primary care assessment, a social determinants of health assessment, a brain health assessment, or, you know, something else, food, transportation, nutrition needs. Would that person, you know, as a care coordinator or navigator equipped with a, a platform in their hand on their phone, they can say, okay, we, we spent the last 30 minutes here together and what I've learned is you, you have a nutrition need, you have a, an insurance need, and you have a, a primary care need. Let's, let's get on this and make a couple referrals. The other thing about the, the platform that I don't know if John underscored it is there's a closed, closed loop referral. So you're really being able to see if people acted on those. And knowing that somebody didn't follow up, sometimes it's important as, you know, somebody following up and not knowing about it. So it allows us to see how people are using or not utilizing services that exist as well as services, services that they need, but they, they can't find.
Will Mercy be using Access Me Care?
Well, Mercy is on ONBIRHA and Access Me Care, both platforms. So they onboarded with us and we promote access to them. We take referrals to them from ONBIRHA, which then goes into our Access Me Care platform so that we're able to capture the data on the referring in clients that we want to run all Hillcrest clients through, through Access Me Care as well as the referrals that we make. We want them to run through Access Me Care so we know that they were made.
So will you be working with Mercy then to bring Access Me Care onto their bus? If it's not already there?
As we saw their presentation, I think that was what was going off for John and I and Francie for sure here.
So they're on the platform, the answer would be yes, we'll be pursuing that with them because it makes sense in care coordination.
And then did, go ahead.
One more.
I think there is one, one last piece, and it's more just informational. We, we put a qualified opportunity zone or social impact proposal to you as well. I don't have anything, you know, we, we sent the supervisors this week some one-page material. Really, really what I wanted to focus on today...
I can, I can speak too.
Okay.
So I, we, we sent you a one pager each of you, and I think, you know, we'll let, we'll let you take a look at that. You don't need to do that right now. If I were to emphasize just a few points since the first time we presented on the QOZ here, I think we received some good feedback about QOZ might, you know, cause people to think a lot of things or be confusing what is the qualified opportunity zone. Without jumping into that, I, I, I put in parentheses on the presentation, social impact. This is really about social impact through social determinants of health. The QOZ is a vehicle for bringing funding together, private-public partnership. But heretofore, we've emphasized social impact and social deter, social determinants of health value of this particular proposal, which leverages the integrated health home model that we currently deliver, especially in rural areas of Iowa. Our telehealth resource network at our New Day Walk-In Center and the SAMSA intercept model, which addresses emergency department and jail diversion, the federal model of, of care. The social impact of this project will, this particular proposal that we're going after will focus on access to rural healthcare. And so, and, and a component of that is care navigation, a component of that is through telehealth, a component of that is through collecting data to understand how, how healthcare is being delivered and where we're meeting the mark and where we're missing the mark. Also of interest though in this proposal, which I tried to give you in the one pager, is a build-to-suit real estate component that could benefit the county, could also benefit other private providers, could benefit the city or the state of Iowa in terms of how you might like to co-locate people for different functions in terms of need for space. And that's usually a key component of the qualified opportunity zone. Investment structure has to surround, tends to surround real estate and served and underserved pre-designated areas called community zones. So we've included for each of you as boards of supervisors in our launch, we're, we're in a Phase 1A, we're calling it. There's a three-phase feasibility study, which is what we've asked funding for. Hillcrest has invested $75,000 toward that already and spent $30,000 of that to launch into this study. Each of you should have received a request from our consultants for a conversation as key informant interviews to shine light and experience on, you know, what's working, what's not working as it relates to rural access to healthcare, what would be build-to-suit needs within qualified opportunity zones that could benefit the county of Dubuque. So we would hope that you would respond favorably to those requests and take those interviews with, with the consultants because we've already paid for them at Hillcrest. And then the rest of the proposal stands really as to how we first submitted it to the board of supervisors several weeks, if not a month or so ago, as it relates to the overall project and funding to go through a full-blown feasibility study, which involves two consulting organizations and the University of Utah's Sorenson Impact Center. That was all I had on that.
Anything else you'd like us to know about any of your proposals?
I think the, the one thing I would say, and, you know, having stood up here a couple of times now, there's so much integration in our proposals, I don't know that always comes across. I think I shared in, in one of my public comments last time I was here that we have a strategic plan that is, you know, newly developed, that ran from October of, of last year through March of this year. And so all of this is tying together as part of a strategy. So when we talk about what we've done through pivoting our CCBHC to use our school, which was being unused and to form the, a New Day Walk-In Center, and we talk about our telehealth resource network and the Access Me Care platform and a desire to pivot more services to meet people as they are and where they are. We are, all of this is integrated. We have a vision in our heads and we have a plan on paper. And it's, sometimes it's difficult when we're in front of the board of supervisors. I, as a new person, am trying to understand, we're talking about two buckets of funding potentially, or three buckets of funding potentially, and taking questions... potentially, or three buckets of funding potentially, and taking questions about why here, why this, why not go back to this group? I'm learning, right? I'm on a learning curve and that's why my response is, you know, whoever can educate me, by all means, please do. Sometimes it's, you know, teaching an old dog new tricks takes some time. So want to be asking the right people for the right things. But for us, what we don't want to do sight of is that we're really trying to design Hillcrest as a seven-acre campus to be more than that and to do things that people that don't come to the campus will benefit from, right, throughout the county. And that's what we're excited about, is just the integration of the value that we have in facility-driven services, but people and expertise that are fully and entirely ready and competent to do more home and community-based, in-home, in-community services and going to where people are that don't typically come to even an outpatient service and therefore end up without care, being at higher risk of going next in the care that's at a much higher cost to the payer.
I think the only thing I would add Supervisor McDonough is that the state of Iowa has a desire to go to value-based contracting. The federal government has a desire to go to value-based contracting. All social determinants of brain healthcare payers have a desire to go to value-based purchasing. The QOZ offers that opportunity in value-based contracting in a model to study where Dubuque County can be put on not only the local map, the statewide map and a national map for value-based contracting and being at the forefront to improving access to rural brain healthcare that I would ask that you support the project because it's very meaningful in these times and it would move the system to a more proactive approach to funding for things like this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Question?
Thank you.
We'll play it up.
Thank you. When we meet next, which will be next Monday, you have asked us to schedule time for canvassing? Is that correct? Did we all get that email from Don?
Yeah.
Maybe we should jump now, related to the Fund 10, is there any additional ones that are next?
There will be some next week. We anticipate them and we have a tentative work schedule on the 15th for you as the board to, to review all of the present, presented projects to you and decide which ones you would like to request of the...
So who's coming on the 8th? The list I have from our projects, the only one I've seen that hasn't been here is the Dream Center. Is there more?
Yeah.
And who are they?
There's going to be Mount Pleasant Home, just submitted some information.
Mount Pleasant Home?
Right.
Okay.
You have an application from Mount Pleasant Home. And this is just again, looking through the lens of brain health. Can we help them through this funding? The community foundation is bringing, they actually assisted the Dream Center in focusing more on brain health. And then they're bringing, I haven't seen it yet, but they are developing several collaborative efforts as well. That should be, I think, to Don. I, I expected it last week, so I'm not sure. We'll have to touch base with them to see.
You mentioned the Dream Center. Is that with community foundation or solo, or do we know if they're...
They're right. They're here, they're, they're coming next week.
Okay, thank you.
So Dream Center.
Mount Pleasant.
Mount Pleasant. Community Foundation. And do you know of anybody else?
And then who created the Fund Balances spreadsheet with the list and when will they update that list? So it's helpful for me to see, you know, you know, we're going to have to go back through on the 15th and understand all of these proposals, try to figure out who funds, who gets funded, who gets, anyway, I'd like the list and the complete list if we can, if it's evolving, I understand that.
From Stella.
Okay. So who gets that information to Stella? Is that something...
Ed and I will work with her.
Okay.
Get numbers from today. So we'll have her update them.
Okay. Yeah, that would be helpful because it's very helpful to see the list of the projects and if there's more projects, the sooner they can get on that list, the better it would be, for me at least, to understand what we're trying to fund.
Hillcrest just left and they have told me verbally they're withdrawing that staff recruitment and retention, the $728,000 request. I guess let's get that confirmed in writing from them.
Yeah, definitely firming up the list if we, you know, I don't want to take anyone off, certainly adding is not as big of a problem because at least considered. But, you know, if they would request that in writing, we can remove them. Because if, you know, we only have a million dollars in Fund 10, we've got a long list of projects and so we'll have to obviously prioritize.
I think it was nearly, it was over 5 million in requests, right?
Well, of course, right. Two million of it is...
But the goal on the 15th would be to prioritize for, for you to go to the region for Fund 10 requests. Is that my understanding?
Correct.
Okay.
Two million is for the Take Care Center on this list. And I'm not sure what the request is right now for that. So there's a lot more work to be done on this list before the 15th.
Were you going to present on that next week?
Oh, yeah.
She presented already, she printed those last week.
What'd she did? She, you had changed it?
And then there's one out, there's several components to a request from Amy Coles Sunley through the Health Department that I don't think are going to be scheduled. I don't know how to address that exactly. There's, anyway, that's a work in progress as well.
At the Board of Health?
Um, yeah, Samantha's Health.
Do they, are they aware of our schedule and timeframe to review these and then get them to us?
Yes, they are aware of them.
Okay.
They're, they're just not very ready and so they may just by default end up being something for federal funding or not.
The good news is we have other buckets of funding.
Yeah.
And I think we're doing the wise thing to prioritize these for Fund 10 balances as those are drawing down.
At least attempt to use that lens, right? Like NEIA, okay.
Best she can, yeah, I think as best, as best she can. And then the process from, on the 15th will be for the board to deliberate on the proposals and...
Come up with another one.
And then the dollar amount is a million dollars roughly we have available. Is that correct? 1,690,000?
Right.
Okay.
And then we're going to canvass at the end of our meeting next week as well. Right. So those, those are going to be long meetings. We have public hearings and we have, the 8th will be a long, it'll be a long meeting.
My last question to the, to the board or others that could answer it, does, does May Hinchin play a role in this? She's the regional CEO, she's here in Dubuque, talking about all these projects that are going to go to that board, but yet it appears she's not involved in this process. Is, is that okay? Is that normal?
We did have a conversation about that, May and I and Ann and I think Stella or Don was in that conversation as well. May has, has only been informed by counties what they're doing or likely to do and not engaged in the development or weighing in on anything. So she's not gone to Jones County to look at their proposals and they've submitted several. She's, she's not had that role. So Ann is our, Ann is kind of the messenger that, you know, if there's, if we want May to weigh in, I don't think she, I just don't think she will. I mean, she's not available generally.
It'd probably be best to stay neutral on all of them instead of showing preference to one county compared to another.
Seems an odd goal for somebody in the title of CEO, but, you know, if she's a, purely a bureaucrat and just processing things, I get it, but normally those in leadership positions, use those leadership positions to influence, shape and lead. But I asked the question, that's just my interpretation, I don't know enough about her role and, but I just find it odd that she's here in Dubuque, she's on the Dubuque payroll and she's never present in any of these. And so I just asking you from the region on the board if that's okay and it sounds like that's how it is, so.
Right. May is much more engaged than any previous CEO, like by 300. So...
My, my experience with CEOs and directors are usually when there's millions of dollars floating around, they're present. But that's just, so this is a little different. So I'm not, I'm not saying she's not doing her job, I'm just asking questions and it seems different than somebody normally with that leadership title. I would love to have her here more often and I think she'd add value, so that's my request.
You could do it the way Lynn County does it. Lynn County lets the board, Ben Rogers, bring all the projects and make all the recommendations and they just go.
Who, being who, the board of supervisors?
He sent all the emails, he took all the applications. I mean, it's just a different way. Every, every county's done it differently. We, we make the sausage in public, so.
Yeah, I certainly think we should be involved.
(laughing).
Happy to be involved and I'm pleased you're serving on the board, but I, yeah, I'm happy to be involved.
I can't imagine. I mean, everybody does it differently, so. All right, looking for, if there's nothing else, we're looking for...
Motion to adjourn. I will second.
Motion to second to adjourn until next Monday, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.